Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees to order. It is 7:00 PM. I'd like to start with the roll call. Supervisor Carrie, not yet here. Yeaple?
Present.
Flintoff, present.
Grant?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Riser? Absent. Under the statute as clerk, I'll preside over the meeting until such time that there's a motion from the board to appoint another facilitator. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is the adoption of agenda. In front of us, we have a proposed adoption of the agenda. I have a couple of proposed changes. I have a small add-on to K1, so would ask that we take K1 payment of the bills off consent and move to the end of new business. Also, I'd like to suggest a correction to the agenda. It was my error in O1, the presentation by actuary on township pension unfunded liability. I'd like to just say presentation by MERS. MERS expert, who is not an actuary, but we're very glad that you're here.
Jessica, I'd like to make a change.
Okay.
I'm proposing that we remove O2, which is the, it's a new business, the Piper Ridge conditional rezoning.
Are there-
Next agenda.
To move it to the August 26th agenda?
Yes. And the applicant is aware that this may happen tonight.
Any other proposed changes to the agenda?
I did receive a request via telephone call earlier today from Supervisor Carrie. She didn't know she would be here, so on her behalf, and I would also support it, to table N3, Ordinance to Repeal Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Article 4-II Downtown Development Authority to August 26th. She asked that this be done so that a whole of the board could be present for the discussion of the vote.
I don't support that. Could we take- We may have to separate these out for the vote.
Sure, sure. Ryan, could we put a pin in that motion and just get any other proposed changes? Okay. Any other proposed changes to the agenda?
I have an add-on, please.
Yes.
It is presented by Murphy Harrington, Parks Director, Township Hall Park Playground Phase 2 Michigan Recreational Construction Contract.
New business?
A board's decision.
Consent?
I think it could go on consent.
I'll support that.
Okay. A proposal to add on Township Hall Park Playground Phase 2 Michigan Recreation Construction Contract to consent as K17.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Any other proposed changes? So with those on the table accepting the potential motion from Treasurer Yeaple, is there a motion to adopt the changes discussed?
I would move the changes as presented, apart from N3.
Motion by Yeaple, is there support?
Support.
Support by Noel, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Those proposed changes are adopted. Treasurer Yeaple?
So, once again, I had received a request via telephone call earlier today from Supervisor Carrie. She had requested that there be a tabling of Item N3, the Ordinance to Repeal Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Article 14-II Downtown Development Authority. She wanted to table this until August the 26th to allow for additional discussion and also hopefully the entire board to be present for the vote.
Is there discussion? Is there, first of all, is there a second?
I'll support that, so we can discuss it.
Okay. Our rules don't require a second to discuss.
Oh, okay.
But, but certainly if you want to support the motion.
Certainly since she's not here this evening yet, if we don't have a second, we can always take this back up if she's present when the item comes up.
And I would say to, you know, my, my concern about it is really enlightened, and we'll, we'll discuss that if we discuss it tonight, but really, I think the, the yesterday's DDA meeting being called with the potential purpose of authorizing, you know, $3 million to purchase major land, kind of drove home for me, the urgency. People have asked, what's the brush? And, you know, I thought hypothetically, worst case scenario, the DDA could just call a special meeting and suddenly authorize all their money. And in fact, that is almost what happened yesterday, so. I know we've talked about this privately, Ryan, but for that reason, I think it's important for the board to act tonight. I, I didn't feel, it wasn't as clear to me that that was as realistic until I saw yesterday's meeting.
And Jessica, we would ask you go into more detail when we discuss this issue, so everybody hears what you're going to say.
Seeing no second, I would- Sorry, seeing no second, I would say we just move on.
I just want to confirm, we have a motion to table N3 until August 26th. Is there a second? Seeing no second, we'll move on with the agenda as a member. E, Declaration of Conflict. This is the time for board members to declare any real or perceived conflicts of interest related to items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything to declare? Hearing none, moving on to correspondence received. The correspondence file is contained. I did update it today with all the communications the board has received through midday today. G, Special Topics. Thank you Aurora and Stephen, please come forward. This is our opportunity to introduce Stephen Shepherd for consideration of Utilities Field Technician Position. Aurora?
He's our manager. So we have one vacant Utilities Field Tech position, and I'm here to introduce Steve Shepherd to fill that role, and he will go into a little bit of his background with Multi-Lake Water and Sewer Authorities.
Yeah, so like you said, I'm Stephen Shepherd. I've been with Multi-Lake Water and Sewer Authority, serving Dexter Township, London, Putnam, for nine years. I have about four to five years of experience of being a crew lead supervisor, and I'm really look and committed to learning and having more personal growth and professional growth, and I can really see doing that here, and I'm very excited for the next steps of serving the community.
Welcome. Welcome.
Welcome aboard. We look forward to having you as part of our team.
I want to thank Aurora, Brandon, others who were involved in the process. Stephen, you come highly recommended, and we're really excited to have you onboard. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aurora. Thank you, Stephen.
Next up, we have our first of two public comment periods. This is the time for members of the public to speak to the board for up to five minutes on any matter. Those present who would like to speak, please come forward to the table here. Thank you.
Good evening. Carolyn Altmar, Scioto resident. I confess I have not paid much attention to the DDA prior to the last couple of weeks. Having come up to speed with the current situation, I'm appalled once again by some of the board members. Let me see if I understood what is being stated slash debated here. One, the board needs money to accommodate shortfalls in funds due to several mistakes, millage-related, and the huge cost of the new HVAC system. They see funds sitting quietly in the DDA's account and wish for the DDA to reimburse money to the township to assist with the shortfalls. Two, some board members have asked for capture money for all the DDA millages with the veiled and not-so-veiled threat to disband the DDA that the DDA has outlived its usefulness. Three, the DDA, gobsmacked by this threat, has now to date offered all the future fire, fire, fire millage capture, and $440,000 and other capture monies to the township, making to me a very compelling case for pumping the brakes on dissolution and working together to make a long-term plan and work with the board to come up with an agreement on the future goals and projects of the DDA. This is a very reasonable offer. The tenor of the board is, nope, not enough, we want it all. But, David Reed quoted part of a statute on 8/11 that the DDA has been delinquent in returning yearly overages to the township. Interesting that the auditors never caught this. I would like to hear the DDA attorney and Ms. Fink's opinion on this. So, some board members think that they owe these overages, and perhaps they are. But, watching the videos of the last few meetings, it seems to this resident that the DDA is acting in good faith and feels that they're useful to the township and have lots to offer. Seems logical to me considering the rapid growth of Scioto, and yet the board members say, work completed, no need for you anymore. So my questions, one. In view of the DDA's desire to work collaboratively and their valid statements of work yet to be done, why the hurry? Why not wait and see if a more co-joint effort between the two groups can be established, especially with new members on the DDA, fresh faces and new ideas? I understand that previous DDAs may not have been as effective and proactive as one would hope. Taking an all-or-nothing stance and right now makes you look like tyrants. I really hope for a lot more from you. As the taxpayer in the township, I think all the residents deserve a very detailed accounting of the monies we're talking about and legal explanation about how these monies are to be allocated. I've heard mention that the township would not get to keep all the funds, that some percentage would be allocated as reimbursement to other millages elsewhere. We need to know details, please. I urge you not to dissolve the DDA. Please take the invitation of the DDA members to work together for a newer and better DDA. Treasurer Yeaple, I especially urge you to do so, as you stated in your desire to keep the DDA in place as you did yesterday. Finally, I wish to, I wish to state my unwavering support for Supervisor Carrie and her fight against this travesty of justice. I've heard several of you explicitly state that you believe her innocent. There are others that I have not heard this from. Please live up to your beliefs and continue to support her financially. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Anyone else? We'll go through folks present and then those joining remotely. Hi, Gus.
Buddy. Came to the point where I'm here to talk about the DDA again, and we came to a point in 35 days. I don't understand how, from working with the township, of being a great partner of the township, look at the DDA being a target of the township. I don't know how we got there. I'm, I'm the current chair of the, of the DDA, I've only been on three years. I, I heard that our mission was fulfilled, and it was time for us to be dissolved, for the DDA to be dissolved, saying us. The mission of the DDA, it's far from being over with many things that we do. Originally was to bring the water, the sewer into the Boulevard, all the way to Parker Road. We've done it all. It was accomplished all the way to Becker Road. Parker was the next, the next vision. And also maintain the Boulevard and enhance the Boulevard, which is, is, it's a great jewel of the township, and I hope it stays that way. The mission is, it is far from over, if you ask me. And I don't know how we came in 35 days to be over, where it says fulfilled. Well, if it was fulfilled now, it was fulfilled last year or the year before. I don't see what, we've been working hard, we, we returned to the township, the fire department, the funds for, that we got mistakenly, however you want to put it, from the election, and we also give another $690,000 to various, various areas of the township, landscape, parks, sheriff contract, fire, fire truck, $250,000, bus service, another $40,000, and fire inspections. I would, would love to do more and love to work on it on, on all these areas. However, the communication hasn't been the greatest, even though we have two people from the, from the township, but I believe that if a task was given to us, I think we'll, the DDA, again, say us, I think we'll, we'll get it done. That's my opinion. The hardest thing for me to understand is, is that the capture of the DDA is about $1.8 million net that is going to go away. I don't get it. You as elected officials, I should look the, the $1.8 million and don't give it away, but spend it on the residents of the township and, or Scioto Township, and for the benefit of the township. I don't think that, that it's a wise decision to let the money go. It's $1.8 million for the next five years till 2031. We're looking at about, at $10,000, because right now, the DDA has, right now, the DDA has $4.4 million, and the township, according to the treasurer, it stands to gain another $600,000, the rest of it goes away. Why should the rest of it go away? I mean, that's the way I understand it. I mean, if anything, they should give it to the fire department. That needs a lot. You know, the DDA should exist, so she has $3.9 million to the fire department, and pay off, pay off the mortgage for the fire department, make it easier to bond, instead of just taking the money and giving it right back. You know, it doesn't make sense for me. As little as I've been on the board for three years and a few months for, for, on, as a chair, I try to do the best I can. I'm new on this. I'm not, I'm not very educated like the rest of the people that have been on the board for a long time. However, I'm definitely willing to work on, on a mission. We're not, we can't work on 2030 missions, but we can work one on two, because, you know, we're all volunteers, we have things to do, we have jobs to do. You know, and we'll do the best we can, you know. We go from six meetings to 12 meetings to 14 meetings a year, and now, you know, if we belong to more communities, then it makes it a little bit harder for us. But, you know, if we have one or two or three targets, we can get them done. I, I look in all of you to not give the money away and to do the best for the township as you, as you always try to do. Thank you for your time, and it was always a pleasure working with you up to time.
Thanks, Gus.
But continue to do so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Obviously, our supervisor has arrived. I'll turn over facilitation to her. Thank you.
Madam Supervisor and Scioto Township Board of Trustees, my name is Jay Holland, and I'm a lifelong resident of Washtenaw County. I'm here tonight to encourage you to continue with the Scioto Township Downtown Development Authority. I've been on the board for about 20 years, and I want to bring to light some of the things that the township DDA has accomplished. One of the most important things that the DDA has accomplished is they fought light, for those of you that were here when it started. When DDA was established, Scioto Township had some blighted areas, and from time to time, there are still some township areas that are blighted, and I'll show them to you if you, if you'd like. Lately, DDA has been working with business owners in the state of Michigan to eliminate brownfields in Scioto, which hopefully may continue. My understanding is that by eliminating the Downtown Development Authority, Scioto Township will be giving away revenues of about $2.2 million a year or more per year for the next 10 years, approximately $22 million, and that's assuming that our tiffs don't increase. I certainly hope that the board trustees will discuss where they plan to make up for the decrease in their dollars to the township and to their residents and their constituents. Most likely, that funding will be replaced by higher taxes by a millage or an SAD. And I hope those of you that are listening tonight in the township that are taxpayers hear that. I'd like to, like to, like to, really like to see that you've got a plan. In the past few years, we've done bus shelters, paved roads, built the Boulevard, maintained the medians, sewer system, water mains, done sidewalk projects, a bus study, a long-term study for the North Road, North Zeke Road Quarter, road repair, contributed to the fire engine purchase, sewer replacement, parks, pathways in brownfield, and bus service. One trustee thought it was inappropriate for DDA to contribute to Boulevard repair, not realizing that the DDA was returning dollars from the countywide road millage, but at least we could earmark that for Scioto. We contribute to the fire department for, in fact, DDA recently budgeted over $350,000 for the fire department. And I admit that on the whole, DDA has somewhat lost its way in the past few years, and I apologize for that, because I've been there. And as far as moving forward with projects. But I would like to continue. I would like to sit down with trustees to figure out how we can work together and not give up $22 million plus per year for the next, $2.2 million per year or $22 million over the next 10 years. And I see people nodding in on the affirmative, but I don't know how you can be so negative and keep nodding in the affirmative. It bothers me. Yes, the Scioto Board, the Scioto Board of Trustees proposed a millage proposal incorrectly, according to them, and DDA was benefiting from that, but DDA has been trying to work this out. I can't believe that trustees could be so short-sighted as to eliminate the Scioto Township DDA. As a result, the only way to make up, I think, is a tax increase on every property owner in Scioto Township. Tell me if I'm wrong in your discussion. I think it's irresponsible and reckless. And just so you know, one of the trustees suggested that maybe we could just start, restart a DDA if we need to later. A trustee doesn't realize that it'd be, it'd be more difficult to just restart a DDA, and it would likely take 25 years or more to get back to the kind of, of the funds that DDA, that this DDA is generating and accruing, because you would start at a baseline of zero, and it's the zero that we started at 25 years ago. That's been increasing. So having been appointed and served on about 50 township committees, commissions, and boards, I am very disappointed and hope that your constituents understand how irresponsible and reckless your action may be. Now hereby submit my resignation as a board member, Scioto Township DDA. Goodbye and good luck.
Thank you, Jay.
Patterson, Scioto Township President. I wrote my public comments to this board earlier today. I hope you all read them. I'm here tonight to say what I have to say face-to-face. One thing I didn't write about today was about last night's planning commission meeting. Kathleen, during that meeting, you gave a report on what happened at the DDA meeting. You said, quote, "They discussed. The Board of Trustees had provided an agreement asking for sharing of DDA capture of four millages, fire, transit, parks, and LPC. And today, the DDA decided not to take action on the agreement for four." When asked what that meant, you said, "They had previously decided that they would like to support the fire," and then Bob Hyde interjected by not capturing the fire millage, to which you responded, "That's right, because prior to the winter taxes, the Scioto fire funding came from a special assessment district not subject to capture." The new millage, which covers the existing station and operations, and the new station and operations, was submitted as a millage, which is subject to capture, so the Board of Trustees asked them to voluntarily share those funds along with three other millages. Jan Culbertson interjected at that point, "So they had a special meeting and chose not to take action?" Kathleen responded, "Right." That is the entirety of your report to the Planning Commission. The DDA is the primary area that the Planning Commission deals with. The DDA is an important component of what the Planning Commission does. Did you not think it was important to tell the Planning Commission that the dissolution of the DDA was on the agenda for tonight's meeting? As a rhetorical question, I won't ask you the answer. So, during that report, there was not a peep about dissolving the DDA, not a peep about this being an emergency meeting to discuss that issue, not a peep about the DDA sending another $440,000 to the township today, not a peep about the fact that DDA had indeed returned the fire millage capture on the July 28th meeting. Just, they had previously decided, quote, "They had previously decided they would like to support the fire," unquote, and then Bob Hyde again interjects. And you heard that part already. Not a peep about the DDA's multiple demonstrations that they were willing to work with this board, not a peep about the in-depth discussion at the 3:00 PM meeting about how to help fix this mess. Kathleen, you and I have known each other for the last few years, and we have been significant allies and friends. We have been side-by-side on many issues. We have agreed on many issues. If Will Hathaway had said your words to the Planning Commission last night, you would have stood up from the resident seats, interrupted the meeting, and called him a liar. And I would have stood up right next to you. For you to intentionally manipulate what you told the Planning Commission last night is astounding. Leaving out the most important information while giving only a sliver of the truth is something I never thought I would see you do. This is exactly the kind of thing I would expect out of Will Hathaway. Never you. I am so disappointed in you. In my opinion, tonight's report from you was as good as a lie. And I never thought that would happen. Why on earth did you do it? At a board meeting a month ago, you complained that you shouldn't be slaughtered, quote-unquote, for your opinion. You are more than, than entitled to your opinion. When your actions are what they were last night, you must be held accountable. You may think my sharing your words and actions is unfair. I think last night's words and actions were unfair to your colleagues on the Planning Commission and to residents. We need our local government officials to be honest, fair, and thoughtful. Tonight's, last night's demonstration had none of those. I am just as slaughtered writing this as you are hearing it. Jessica, at the beginning of the meeting, you said that at the DDA meeting, there was something about $3 million purchase for some land. And then you said, and you were, that concerned you, and you said it almost happened again at the DDA meeting yesterday. I heard no discussions about purchasing land. I heard no discussions about $3 million. I heard nothing about something almost happening again last night. So that's very unclear, and what you said at the beginning of the meeting, I hope you clarify that during that part of the discussion. Jay Holland and I often disagree, but I think the value of his participation can't be argued. The actions of this board have damaged the DDA and damaged the township through the loss of his skill, expertise, and experience. This is more collateral, collateral damage on the dysfunction of this board. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Alex. Everybody? Okay. All right. My name is Alex Thomas. I'm newly appointed, I guess, within the last six months, member of the DDA board. This has been an intense, interesting experience, but I just wanted to share a few thoughts, and I'll, I'll be brief, because, you know, my colleagues have said a lot of things that I agree with. But, you know, I was, I was inspired to volunteer for the DDA board, actually through family. My great-grandfather-in-law was a gentleman named Dick DeLong, who was involved in township and county matters for a long time. And, and my family, you know, they loved the history of this community, and they showed me, you know, sort of the before and after of what this- before and after of what this part of our world looked like fifty years ago, a hundred years ago, and what it looks like now. And it's amazing um to me as a, as a relative newcomer to the community to see all the work that's been done here. So I said, look, you know, I'd, I'd love to in some small way be a part of that. So I reached out and and uh was, was, you know, lucky enough to be appointed to the board and I've learned a lot in the last six months. Um, and, and really hope I get to continue uh contributing in, in this small way moving forward because I think the work of the DDA is very important. There's, there's really two, I think, matters that are connected, that are worth just reiterating and touching on here. I think the first is the issue of the fire uh station and, and the associated millages and the capture uh related to that, you know, I, we talked about it a little bit at our meeting yesterday. Um, I think it's worth noting again that the DDA didn't want those dollars. We didn't seek those out. Um, and we're, I think, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I think we're unanimous in the desire that we get those dollars now into the place that it needs to go so that this fire station can move forward. Um, there's been some back and forth, I think, on how that happens. And I'm not an attorney and I'm not an accountant, so I don't, you know, want to speculate about specifics there. But, but I think it's, it's clear to us that we want to make this happen. And um, you know, our attorney has, has advised us of, you know, the, the language that needs to be present, I think, in the agreement so that that can, that can move forward. And I think that's kind of in negotiation um at the council level. So I'll let them speak to that. But, but again, I just want to reiterate that um we're, we don't want to be an impediment to that moving forward. Um, you know, it's unfortunate that it's kind of gotten into this sort of sticky situation. I know these things happen at no one's fault, but here we are. And I think, you know, with sitting down for twenty minutes, I think we could solve this. I think we can move forward. I think it's a symptom of maybe a broader issue that's been hinted earlier. There is just a, a lack of communication, I think, and it's a two-way street between the DDA and the, the other sort of entities of local government here, certainly to include um the Board of Trustees and, and I just want to recommit. And I think the rest of my colleagues on the DDA Board would agree with me that we want to fix that. Um, and we want to make sure that we are a collaborative partner in this matter and, and other things coming down the road. So, you know, that's the first thing. I think, you know, again, it's been kind of connected one way or another to this broader issue of dissolving the DDA. And again, I'm, I'm new here, you know, so you all know much more about this. But, but, you know, I would just suggest that we don't need to do this now. You know, if you decide as the elected leadership of the township that there's not a use for the DDA moving forward, it's certainly within your right to do so. Um, and, and maybe that is, you know, the, the right decision moving forward. But I, but I would urge you to consider pumping the brakes a little bit on this because I think there is so much that we can do together moving forward. Um, I, I, you know, I, I don't agree with the, the assertion that the, the mission of the DDA has been completed. I mean, I think, you know, we can be a, a great partner in figuring out what the next fifty, seventy-five, hundred years of life in this township looks like. And there's a lot of things that we are uniquely positioned to do, I think. Um, because of the, the dollars that were mentioned earlier, that, that we can keep here in SIO Township as opposed to letting them go to the county or the state or, or other, other entities. So, um, you know, I, I would urge you to, to consider pausing this. Let's work through this fire station issue. Let's get that buttoned up and we can solve that tomorrow if we need to. And I, you know, I think we all understand the urgency. Let's fix that. Let's figure that out. And then let's work together, you know, we have a, um, we have a, a, a meeting coming up to discuss the Jackson Road. Um, you know, commission findings. I mean, there's so much we can tackle together. Um, and, and I think it would be a mistake to, to get rid of this ability now. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for, for hearing me out. Um, my door is always open. I'm, I'm happy to work with all of you moving forward. Um, and, you know, appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
Hi, Mark.
Good evening. Apologize, I whipped these together late in the day, so uh. Uh, good evening, trustees and fellow residents. My name is Mark Smith. I'm a lifelong resident of SIO Township and co-owner of MYHQ, a collaborative coworking community focused on developing ethical STEM-focused companies that will put down roots in our community. MYHQ has made substantial investments into the township with a goal of creating beneficial economic activity and jobs. We look to the DDA and the township uh to partner with us as we help the dozens of companies at MYHQ grow and thrive. I'm here today to speak in support of preserving strategically and strategically utilizing the SIO Township Downtown Development Authority as a vital tool for both economic development and public safety. DDA was originally formed in nineteen eighty-eight, I believe, to help build the Jackson Road Corridor and capture uh tax dollars for infrastructure improvements along, along that Jackson Road Corridor. Uh, thanks to this initiative, we've completed two of the three planned phases, transforming the corridor into a thriving commercial gateway that benefits the entire township. Now, as we face a budget shortfall in constructing Fire Station Two and anticipate the need for a third fire station within the next decade, I urge the board to consider a collaborative solution rather than dissolving the DDA. Here's why. DDA is not just about roads. Uh, it has supported sewer water upgrades, sidewalks, bus shelters, brownfield cleanup. These improvements have, have increased property values and attracted investment without raising taxes. It can be a lifeline for small businesses. The DDA can offer grants, facade improvements, technical assistance and, and help uh local entrepreneurs thrive and be a conduit for state uh funding programs in conjunction with the M E D C. I attended a meeting yesterday with Representative, State Representative uh Jameson, who represents uh Ypsilanti Township, Pittsfield Township, the city of Ypsilanti and part of Superior Township. In attendance, we had DDA members from Pittsfield Township, Ypsilanti Township, the city of Ypsilanti and Superior, all working together collaboratively to uh cap additional program dollars from the M E D C to help businesses, help local governments, improve brownfield, infrastructure. Uh, so there's a number of, of methods that we can utilize through the DDA to pull additional investment dollars into the township. Uh, it can match infrastructure dollars by leveraging county, state, federal grants. The DDA can amplify our local investment and accelerate improvements. It can help fund fire services. A lending agreement arrangement uh and intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement could allow the DDA to contribute to Fire Station Two while preserving its long-term mission. Future tip could be earmarked for Fire Station Three, which is well within the mission of the DDA. And it's with, it's likely going to be located within the DDA uh area. Let's not sacrifice long-term economic vitality for short-term relief. Let's work together, align our infrastructure, safety and development goals uh through a strategic restructuring of the DDA. One of our taglines of MYHQ is unlocking the power of community. I believe the township, DDA, local business owners and residents working together can not only solve the short-term need creatively, but lay the foundation for future improvements to serve the entire township without raising additional taxes. One of the things we're going to have to look at very seriously is our, our sewer infrastructure. And the DDA, together with the township on the town or land, could come up with uh grant funding and help that, solve that problem with some semi or local uh treatment. Uh, therefore thereby increasing the REUs available to the township without necessarily having to increase the size of the pipe or additional funds to the city of Ann Arbor. With that, I want to thank you for your time and I hope you'll consider uh a long-term relationship with the DDA.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Good evening. I'm Linda Smith. I happen to be the chair of the DDA, but I'm here this evening as a independent citizen. Um, a lot has been said and I won't reiterate. But I think the catalyst of what's happening this evening is the funding for the Fire Hall. And I think that all of us working together understand the importance and the timeliness of getting the funding in place so that bonding can be obtained, so that the Fire Hall can be built. The question is how we can make that happen in the few weeks that we have left to get this done without gutting that project. And I think it's probably the most important piece of what's happening this evening. The DDA is certainly very important. But how can we solve this problem that is before us today? I believe after listening to yesterday's meeting of the DDA, which I was not able to attend, that permission was not given to the township attorney, I think, to speak with the DDA attorney Sweeney to work on a collaborative agreement for how the DDA could transfer fire millage funds to the township in order to bridge the funding gap that had been presented to us by the board. That was largely a function of the fact that the township board had not met since the July twenty-eighth DDA meeting when we put that motion forward for the township attorney to work with our DDA attorney. And I'm asking you this evening to allow the township attorney to work with the DDA attorney so that we can put together a document that would allow these funds to flow in a timely fashion so that bonding can occur. The other way this could be done is to immediately dissolve the DDA, take the funding and move forward. I think those are two real options, and I think that one of them's a much stronger option than the other. Encourage you to think carefully on those. The other piece that deeply disturbs me after attending many DDA meetings is um Jessica Flintoff's discussion earlier this evening about the fact that funds were discussed to obtain the Goodrich Theater at the DDA meeting and that there was some sort of smoke and mirrors going on about DDA funding or properties acquisition within the DDA. I want to assure you that I have never heard anyone at DDA at a DDA meeting or in any other format discuss the property purchase of the Goodrich Theater or any other property without bringing it in front of the DDA Board. It would be inappropriate and improper. And I have the highest esteem for the colleagues I have at the DDA, and I have never seen anyone perform in that way. I'm not sure what the comment that was heard was. Uh, perhaps it was taken out of context, but it certainly was not an agenda item on the urgent meeting that was put together for the DDA on the eleventh of August at three P M. That meeting was pulled together because there was an imminent threat of dissolution by the Board of Trustees on this evening's agenda. I was not present at that meeting. I did listen to that meeting. I did not hear any mention of this at that meeting, nor had I at any other time. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
Anyone else present who would like to speak during public comments? Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead. Whoever's standing.
Might as well quit, I promise. I'm not going to talk about the Fire Hall. Um, I, my name's Laurel Park. I live on Craig Road off of Wagner. And I wanted to make a comment regarding the solid waste and recycling um program uh and the preferred provider. Uh, the, the single provider for our SIO Township is a concept that I supported and I still support. Um, I would like to see uh with our current provider priority, and it was also the case with GFL, um, a little more accountability and respect in terms of making sure that um that they leave uh leave properties and leave, leave the solid waste in the containers or in the trucks rather than strewn across the road, uh rather than have the cat trash receptacles uh left out in the middle of the road or blocking driveways or down in ditches. Um, I cannot say with, for a fact that this is the fault of the individuals. It certainly could be people pushing them. It could be cars, whatever. But I, on several occasions, have come back um to my home to see trash receptacles out in Craig Road where I've gotten out, putting them, put them back. Um, couple of times blocking my driveway, so I had to stop and move them out of the way. Um, I have seen recyclables um strewn across the road and I know that happens. I know that, you know, I, I don't expect them to put the cash, the trash receptacles back perfectly. And I know that bottles come out and, and papers and so on, but I've seen, you know, considerable where I've gotten out and cleaned it up myself. Uh, yesterday, I was at the end of my driveway speaking with my neighbor. Our driveways are separated by about ten feet or so. We put our trash receptacles in the middle there. Uh, we were chatting. The, the recycling truck was coming down Craig Road. Uh, it stopped at her receptacle, picked it up, put the recyclables in, pulled away, didn't even take mine. So we kind of looked. I actually ran after it. Had I not been in flip flops, I would have caught it. Um, I did call after approximately fifty-two minutes on hold. I spoke with somebody, explained the situation. He said they would dispatch another truck to take care of it. Um, as of seven twenty-five tonight, when I pulled out of the driveway, it hasn't been done. So I just, uh, you know, I'd like to see, I realize these people have a job to do. I realize that they're on a time crunch. I realize they have a lot to do, but a little more accountability, a little more respect. My, my concern is not just aesthetic, but it's also for safety. And that's my, that's my piece for this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laurel.
Hi, Jan.
Hi, everyone. Jan Culbertson, Planning Commission Chair. And um I have a, a, a couple items. One is um oh three on the um book transit. I just wanted to uh mention commending way for their active outreach. Um, it's really been amazing and I think we have seen an increase in ridership as well as um their willingness to really look at some of the redundant services and really looking out for the best value for, for the township. And, but I want to just highlight that both the uh TAC and the Jackson Road Corridor Study recommends implementing a single fare system. And the AAA TA has said that has to be, go before their board. I just want to keep the pressure on and keep um asking about that because that will streamline um the service between all of Western Washington County and, and uh AAA TA service. Okay, next, um, the um, what most people have been commenting on. And I just want to say that I apologize because I've been out for probably, you know, three weeks um commemorating my mom's life. And, sorry, um, and so coming back to this is a little startling. And so I, and I haven't, you know, kept up with kind of what's going on. So um, you know, that, that's on me, not really kind of keeping up with what's happening here. So anyway, I, I just want to say that um, that one of the purposes of um investing in the grant from SEMCOG and um, and the Board of Trustees also putting in additional funds for the Jackson Road Corridor Study was to look at what the future of this corridor is. And um, we, you know, next week, we have a joint meeting with the DDA and the BOT and the Planning Commission. And, you know, it, it was really a hope that this meeting would result in us finally looking at aligning some of our, our, our vision, you know, for that corridor. And I sincerely feel that the DDA is an important tool and funding source and um source of expertise. And it's also that communication with the business, the businesses in um, in SIO Township. Uh, SIO Township, we talk a lot about the residents, the residents, but the residents also need, you know, the, the, the business corridor. And it really to have a complete community, we need everyone and everyone working together and pulling together and, and having an aligned vision. So I, I really um see um, you know, this um proposal to dissolve the DDA is being really premature. I, I hear from DDA members and, and board members, you know, a willingness to um, you know, solve the problems, the immediate problems that we've got. Obviously attorneys are involved, et cetera, et cetera. That, you know, it's a complicated, it, it's a complicated mess sometimes running, you know, a municipality. Um, but it's really the core of the people and we have great people in this township. We have great board members and Jay, I hope you'll reconsider. Um, it, you know, who have served a long time, have a lot of history. And Alex, we have new people who are inspiring, you know, to come and, and be a part and serve this township. So I really implore you to um give this a chance. Um, I just, you know, a couple of ideas, okay? The Jackson Road Corridor Study final report lays out more than ten million dollars worth of projects that will improve safety, connectivity, economic viability of the area while restoring the natural ecosystems. And it all happens primarily within the DDA boundary. Um, projects that serve both the interests of the residents and the businesses. And um, and when I think about our And, and when I think about our challenge of carbon neutrality, I mean, that corridor, okay, it, it has the largest impervious surface. All right, the majority of that stormwater goes directly into Honey Creek and into the Heron River. We, we can implement green infrastructure projects within the DDA that will improve dramatically our, our water quality. The DDA has an enormous amount of non-functional turf grass. We can restore a lot of, a, a lot of the natural ecosystems that are so prevalent elsewhere in SiO Township along the Jackson Road Corridor. I, I call it sort of rewilding, which may be a little exaggerated, but there's no reason why. You know, you, they've done a great, the DDA has done a great job at taking and, and stopping light and so forth, but that, that's just the beginning. We need to restore the corridor. We need to make it connect to our residents and, and so forth. So give us a chance, postpone this, and let's get together next week and align our, our vision and what we can do with the Jackson Road Corridor. Thank you.
And Jen, could you give us a reminder that's?
That's a four o'clock.
On August 19th.
Nineteenth. Yeah.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Anyone else present that would like to speak during public comments?
I'm Sweeney.
Hi, Ryan.
Hi. I'd just like to, to say that the, the emphasis on, on this vote being that the DDA has fulfilled its purpose, met its goals and objectives. I think it's worth pointing out specifically to the, the trustees prior to, to a vote if one is scheduled this evening, if a motion is, if there's a move, if there's a motion, oral motion on the board. There are projects that are going on right now that align with the DDA's purpose and obligations. There's been a lot of discussion about the 1988 ordinance that established the DDA, but nobody's really addressed the 2006 amendment to the DDA ordinance and the expansion of those goals and the purposes of the DDA. By way of example, the new master TIF plan states one of those goals and objectives is going to be encourage pedestrian non-motorized and public transportation improvements in conjunction with private developments. It was just stated by Jan that the board, the trustees have undergone a Jackson Corridor Complete Street Study and set a schedule for August 19th for the DDA and the trustees to meet together to discuss its recommendations and begin implementation planning. I know this has been seven months of planning since December 2024. The idea behind this study is for transit land use and safety. One of the main goals and principles in the Jackson Corridor Complete Street Study in the articles on the trustee's website is that we would identify opportunities for non-motorized transportation and public, public transportation improvements. But that is almost verbatim one of the goals and objectives that set forth in the new master plan for the DDA. It was meant to be put into process. DDA funds would have presumably been used to fund these improvements that the study brought about. How can we say that the DDA has met its obligations and purpose if there are still ongoing projects in front of the DDA that match its goals and purposes word for word? A second goal of the DDA under the 2006 master plan is that we participate in efforts to encourage new private developments in conjunction with public improvements. Just this past month, company Peerless presented a Honey Creek Development Project to the DDA. This is an environmental contamination remediation project that is almost $3 billion. That would be funded completely by TIF money through the DDA. And it's on the table. A contract was presented. We know that the trustees are going to be working with the WCRBC to work in conjunction with the DDA to fund that project, and the WCRC would be managing the administration of the project. How can we say that the DDA has met its obligations and purposes and goals underneath of this, the current master plan and the ordinance that, that created it when we have contracts like the Honey Creek Development and the Jackson Corridor Complete Street Study live, being discussed at meetings, being entered into, being contemplated by the Board of Trustees and the DDA and the WCRBC? So I, I would just, I just really want that to be at the forefront of what we're talking about when we're thinking about terminating an entity that has sufficient assets to fund these important projects and that if it's abolished, these funds are going to disappear, and we're not going to be able to fund these projects that are specifically laid out in the purposes, goals, and objectives that was in the ordinance creating the DDA and then subsequently amending the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Anyone else present? Would like to speak? No? Christine?
Okay, we have online Pam Boyd. Go ahead, Pam.
Thank you. Pam Boyd, SiO resident, SiO government watchdog. First, I'd like to start off and thank the resident who came in to speak about priority waste. It reminded me that when I spoke to you last time about priority waste, I didn't tell you the whole story. Yes, there was the glass in my street, the glass shards, but I also happened to witness one of the trash men digging into somebody's, into my neighbor's recycle bin and throw the recycle box into the trash. I think that's a violation. Regarding N3, have any board members had conversations with business owners on Jackson West of Baker about this possible dissolution? I've spoken to one, and this was, this was a good year ago, and she asked me, so when are they going to complete the Boulevard from Baker to Parker? And I said, you know, I don't know. I'm, my ears to the grindstone. I'll let you know when I hear. So my question to you is, you know, there are no business members here from that area of the DDA. I'm guessing none of you have spoken about what you plan to do. And so let's say you dissolve the DDA. I'd say that probably every one of those business owners are going to feel like you just gave them a big fuck you. I think that your going about this is unprofessional. Your, your conversations that you've had with the DDA have been embarrassing. Yeah, so I'll be speaking to more business owners. I'd like to, to get their, more of their opinions. Also, I'm wondering if you've spoken out, has there been any outreach to residents about, you know, that you're going to dissolve the DDA? So who's going to take over the work that the DDA does? Do we have somebody on, in SiO Township that can do all the work that the DDA does? You know, we voted for you, but we didn't vote for you to turn into idiots. Table this and do some outreach, do some homework. You know, it's the board's fault that we've had these millages get written up wrong. You guys need to take the responsibility. The buck stops with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks, Pam.
Anyone else online that would like to speak at public comment? Please raise your zoom hand. There are no hands raised.
Okay.
Well, thank you to all who spoke during public comments. Is, we're on to board member response, and let's start at this end, please. Trustee Brand?
No, I have no comment.
Okay. Clerk Flintoff?
Just very briefly. I know we'll get into the substance of the item when it comes up. I would just say I agree that, I mean, it's been kind of, I've been stunned at, at the kind of information that's not been shared or understood or whatever's going on in terms of communication. I would say to a couple of the questions early on from Caroline, definitely, you know, all the financial projections, the legal memo, those things are in the packet. I did observe some of that. That's unfortunate. I think that's an issue this board needs to talk about between the board and all of our committees is how we can improve communication. And I would just say that for me, this is really a policy issue. I want to thank the DDA members. I think you're all very good, smart, dedicated people, and, and I have no, this is not a personal issue for me. It's really a policy difference. So I do want to thank you all for your service.
Here's your April. Do you have anything?
Sure. A couple of quick things. Jan, I did want to let you know that Marie and Ken and Forrest, some Marie Grass from Wave and Ken and Forrest from AA TA are planning on being at our meeting on August 26th. I just have this initial item on tonight since there is a market increase, especially on the wave side of, of the financial equation, something we talked about because this purchase of service agreement, rather, renews on October the first. We only have limited time, of course, to have that conversation, but I will ask Ken and Forrest. I'll, I'll send them a note tomorrow and see if they can bring an update about having that single fare system to the next meeting. I appreciate all of the DDA members that, that came tonight and everybody that spoke up about the DDA. Linda, I can speak to your question. One of the items that was going to be considered, it did not happen at the DDA meeting yesterday, but one of the items that could have been considered was a purchase of real property. Certainly, it was just a discussion that had happened between one or two people. I don't know where it would have gone with the whole group. We ultimately didn't end up even having that discussion. It was a really, i- in some ways, it was a good discussion to have where we were able to talk about some of the things that are structurally going on with the DDA, authorize the things that we had authorized in our budget for those transfers to actually happen. Certainly, you know, if that discussion would have happened, I have no idea where it would have gone, but that was something that was asked and was talked about between a couple of different people on the DDA individually, not at a DDA meeting. So it was to bring it to a DDA meeting to have that discussion. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Reed?
I was just going to mention, I'll repeat what Jessica said. Caroline, the details of the DDA finances are in the packet on page 210. So the details are there.
Couple of comments. One general comment that when you're addressing the board, you are to be addressing the board as a whole. Your comments come to the board as a whole. In these board meetings, where you act as a body and individual board members, really, I mean, you can comment about it, but to just address them, I think, needs to be reevaluated. And in the past, when that has happened, we've had the person running the meeting typically would remind the speaker to address the board as a whole.
That, that's a good reminder. Thank you.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
I was facilitating during that period. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, for all, for all board members, not just for certain.
Your public comments were excellent. I, I think that on the DDA, I think that the board faces a difficult decision. I have talked to several of you who spoke on the phone yesterday and today. So I've had lengthy discussions with individuals. I think that I do grasp what they are saying. And sometimes people disagree. So I know it's difficult when you have, you perceive that the board is doing something that you think is crazy or whatever. But sometimes people disagree. Sometimes people have weighed the issues to the extent that they can. And I think at some point, it would be helpful to accept that there are going to be differences of opinion and to keep blaming the board for what we've done and blaming individuals, I think is counterproductive. I think if we want to move on and work together, we all have to do that. We all have to be a player in that process. Ryan, I have a question for you. So what was the reason for the special meeting yesterday?
So there's multiple reasons for the special meeting. One of it was to potentially go into a closed session. That didn't end up happening.
To purchase property.
To discuss up until the time of purchase of real property. It is an OMA, allowed exception under the law. Another reason was to talk about the agreement, see if there was anything we could do in order to enter into the agreement with the board, and then also to authorize the budgeted items that had not been yet released. So we have to budget and then authorize the release of those funds. So if the DDA is to be abolished tonight, and those, at least in my understanding, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the funds that had been allocated to the fire department, to the parks department, and to other departments, if they had not been appropriated, they would not have been able to be transferred.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
And Ryan, which properties?
The only one that I had been made aware of at that point in time was, was specifically the former movie theater site on Jackson Road, but I don't know if anybody else had other ideas.
I did not know about that. Thank you. So, all right. Let's move on to approval of the minutes. J, J1, possible action, approval of minutes of this July 22nd, 2025 regular meeting. Are there any corrections? Yes. You have a correction?
No data yet.
Is there a motion to approve the?
Remove the minutes as presented.
Okay, I thought somebody had, was saying something. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. All right, consent agenda, and they're, apologize for a little, a little bit late. There was an addition, K17.
One was removed.
Oh, wait. Yeah, K1 was removed, and then there's a.
Seventeen added.
Which is, do I, do I have that or?
That's right here, the contract to the park.
Oh, there is. Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'd make a motion to approve consent agenda as amended.
Support? All in, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? Motion passes six zero. Or can, yeah. Okay, that was, I'm sorry.
That was K.
Case, case, K17? Okay. Oh, and then the bills were, okay. I feel like I'm just catching up still. I feel like I'm just catching up still. There we go. All right, I, we are on to reports? Yes, regular reports, um, from the supervisor, treasurer, clerk, office coordinator, departments and committees, if any, and there was a couple of other reports that were included. But they're not separated. So, um, upcoming, well, that would be the clerk. Legal fee summary, um, public safety information, media release, the, um, sheriff. And utility director monthly report. Anyone would like to, um, share their reports or?
Couple comments.
Okay, clerk Flintoff?
Um, sure, just briefly, um, as everybody knows, 4:00 PM was the deadline for the township or other, any other entity to place a proposal, call for a special election this November. Um, WISD has called for such a special election countywide for a new millage. So we will be having a special election, um, in Scioto Township on November 4th, 2025. The proposal is, um, for an additional one mill um, in order to, for a period of 10 years, in order to establish an area career and technical education program. My understanding, um, from what I hear, we of course won't know until the time nears, but my understanding is there's a possibility of two more millages being called in, in May. One potentially by the WCC and the other potentially by the Ann Arbor School District. This is just what I hear, but I understand maybe coming down the pike.
Um, 26.
In May of 26. Um, certainly, I mean, from a township perspective, I don't see any need for any additional millages in the next um, few years here. So I know that was raised as a possibility before, but I don't see that in our financial future being necessary.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, let's move on, um.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, sorry.
And I have a question too.
Okay, um, um, to the board, thank you, Jillian. Um, I'm, I'm looking here who's here, um, to present items. And I apologize for not bringing this up earlier. I wonder if the board would consider hearing N1 and then O1, um, which will be shorter. We have Jamie LaFavor here for O1, and I wonder if the board um, would be open to hearing those in those orders so that those items that we have presenters for can get done.
You're requesting to move O1 under?
N1.
Under N1?
I'll make that motion.
Is there support? Oh, did you get those?
Yeah.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes six zero.
Thank you all.
Moving O1 under N1, okay. Um. I have a question here. This, was this?
It's not an item.
No.
It was called, yep, that's recycled. Christie handed it out, but that meeting was?
That, there's a special meeting that was called, um, by written request of four members of the board for tomorrow at 2:30 for the purpose of going into closed session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, just wasn't sure if we were. All right, um. Well, I guess we're two and one. Um, recruiting search firm recommendations for operations director and finance director, possible action.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Aurora.
So the suggested action is authorize our manager and township attorney to review an executive search firm for the operations director and finance director positions. And I have, um, two that I am recommending that I have contacted. The first one, MML executive search for the operations director position. And the second one, Sanford Rose Associates, JFS Partners for the, uh, finance director position. We are still currently accepting applications, um, for corporate these roles.
Um, I do have a question. The Sanford Rose Associates, uh, for finance director, a 25% fee base on the first year base compensation if hired a referred candidate. So if I remember correctly, for finance director, uh, the salary was around a hundred, 130,000?
Twenty-five.
Hundred twenty-five?
Max.
Max, okay, so I did, the math was for 130,000, 25% of that would be 32,500. Now, is this standard for recruiting companies to do that?
It is for an executive, um, search.
For executives? Okay.
Better than executive position.
Yeah.
And were there other um, recruiting companies that you had investigated and what was your criteria to whittle it down to these two?
Well, I reached out to two other ones and both of the search firms indicated to me that they, um, did not have the, basically the bandwidth, the time to start on, um, an executive search for the township. So they both had indicated that separately and they were search firms that do assist municipalities. Unfortunately, they told me they just could not do it.
Okay, and if this is approved, what is the, the timeframe for this, um, for their search?
So, um, we would have to establish that once we start discussing a possible contract. Um, the reason why I, I chose Sanford Rose Associates is they have a, uh, a history and do the executive search firms in the financial area.
Okay, great. Okay, anyone else have questions or? Trustee Brandt?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on the, on this. I know that, um, uh, Aurora, we discussed broadening the posting and I believe you did that. Uh, and I appreciate that. Um, we also did discuss, um, in essence, uh, Sanford because we talked about an, another firm in, uh, that specializes in finances in the Detroit area. And you informed me that they actually are affiliated with Sanford.
Right.
So this is a specialty firm.
Uh, clerk Flintoff?
Sure, before I lent my support for this because of the price tag, Aurora and I discussed it. I, I will commend you. We have, we're posting in all the right places, GFOA nationally, statewide. Um, there's a dearth of public finance professionals and I want to remind the board that we're recruiting per CPA level, which this township has never had, uh, finance director. Um, part of the reforms we've been embarking on the last five years and, you know, is pleased to have the draft meeting from our auditors on Monday. We're getting better and better and better. Um, but to turn that corner, we really need a qualified finance director. So I think this is, um, well worth it, um, so that we can have the capacity in-house and also be able to end our contract um, with Plant Moran, who does just a small piece of what this person would do.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, uh, trustee or treasurer Yable, sorry, I was looking.
Thank you, Aurora, for bringing this forward. Uh, I know we had talked about, because the city of Novi is actually using the same firm to look for a finance director, so, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that they'll be able to find a quickly, a, uh, shortlist or a single, hopefully more a single candidate, but hopefully they help us find the right person. Um, and I would support this tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So the model motion is to authorize the HR manager and township attorney to create a contract with MML executive search firm for the operations director position at a cost between 17,000 and 23,000 and create a contract with Sanford Rose Associates, JFS Partners for the finance director position at a 25% fee cost based on the first year base compensation if hired a referred candidate. And to authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign these contracts payable from funds in 101-270, human resources.
I, I'd support that. I would ask, that's not a full GL number.
Oh, yeah.
It's not required to be, um, okay, we, um, budget the general fund by department level.
Okay, no worries.
Okay, you sir.
Support.
And support by Reed. Long day, um, all right, um, well, let's, um, all in favor, say aye unless there's, oh, I'm sorry, do you have more?
No, I was gonna say aye.
Oh, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None, motion passes six zero.
Thanks, Aurora, good night.
Thank you, Aurora.
Thanks, Aurora.
Ready to go.
So next will be O1, possible action presentation by actuary on township pension unfunded liability. And clerk Flintoff, could you please again reintroduce?
Sure, and, um, to remind the board of my correction atop the agenda, presentation by MERS on township pension unfunded liability. I want to welcome Jamie LaFavor, who's here from MERS. Um, as you may recall, our, our auditors, um, suggested that annually we hear about our unfunded liability, which there's not much of, but hear about it for OPEB and now for our closed pension plan each year. So I thank Jamie for being here and ask you to kind of take us through the highlights.
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, Howard.
Hello, Jamie.
I am new to Scioto Township, so I want to just take a minute and introduce myself. Um, in the past, if you've been on the board, you've worked with Sue Feinberg. Um, she was with MERS for about 20 years and she retired in June. Um, so I've been with MERS for about 10 years, just in a different area of the state, so I look forward to working with you. Um, for those of you that are not familiar with the MERS annual evaluation, um, it, the rates are always two years ahead. So this one is your most recent. It says of 12/31/24 is going to give you your rates for 2026. Okay, um, GRS is our certifying actuary that we use for the report. And I believe everyone has the report in your board packet.
We do.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and feel free to stop me if there's any question at any time.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so we can skip through most of the beginning. Those are comments from GRS. Um, if you move to page six, that's where we'll start the executive summary. Um, this is the biggest piece with the pension is your funded level. So you'll see that as of 12/31/23, you were at 76% funded. That has dropped a little bit to 72%. And we'll talk a little bit about why as we go through the report. Um, but still a, a good solid funded level. Um, most of our municipalities are right in the seventies. Um, the next page, page seven, you're going to see a comparison of your April 1/25 to April 1/26 contributions. Um, overall, you're going to see about a $61,000 increase from 2025 to 2026. And then below that, you're going to see your employee contributions. That's the amount that the employees contribute towards cost of the pension plan. Those did not change from 23 to 24. Um, the next page, page eight, talks a little bit about the mechanics of the actuarial report and what we use to develop the costs and projections within the plan. So, um, a little bit about why the numbers change from year to year. There's three big pieces. Um, so the first one's going to be if there's any benefit changes, so multiplier changes, um, employee rate changes, something like that. The township didn't make any changes, so that's not impacting you. Um, the second one is going to be the changes in actuarial assumptions that MERS uses. Um, so the assumed rate of return, the mortality tables, things of that nature. And then the third one is the actual experience of the plan. So with those assumptions, if we look at those, how did the experience match that? And that's where you're going to see those fluctuations from year to year. Um, one of the biggest, if not the biggest assumption that the actuaries use is the assumed rate of return. Um, so we did stay at a 6.93% that stayed, um, constant from 2023. A couple of reasons that that did not change. Um, MERS implemented in 2022 the dedicated gains policy. And for anyone that was here, um, in 2015, you might remember that when we moved from 8% assumed rate of return down to a, I think it was 7.75. Um, it took a big hit on budgets. And so what we've done is in years where there is a gain in the market, based off of the dedicated gains policy, we will ask the board to take action on if that assumed investment return rate should be lowered. Um, we were above the 6.93% for 2024. Um, not above it enough to buy down that rate by any basis points. Um, in addition to that, this is the first time that MERS has been below the state assumption of 7%. Um, so we didn't see that there was a fiscal, fiscally responsible need to do so. So we stayed there. Um, the other piece of that is we did just every five years to check those assumptions that we're using to, to formulate our bills and projections. We do an experience study. That experience study was also completed with this valuation and that assumed rate of return was in line. Um, moving on to page nine. I, I just want to stop here because there's always questions. Um, there's a comment about the Michigan local retirement grant. Those were four groups that were below 60% funded and they received some state funding. Scioto Township was not in that pool. Um, so you did not receive assets, which is a good thing because you're funding the plan like you should. Um, but I would like to stop there, so there's no questions. Um, and so I mentioned earlier in the report, we talk about why you're seeing that funded level go down. Um, the biggest conversation this year with the 2024 numbers is the asset smoothing. So what MERS does with the smoothing is we take the return or loss in any given year, recognize it in that valuation and then the next four years. So we smooth the gain or loss over the next five years. What you're seeing with that funded level going down and cost going up is the smooth actuarial rate of return, which you'll see in the comments on asset, asset smoothing, um, was 3.79%, although the market return was 7.28%. And that is because we're still smoothing in that around negative 10 loss from 2022. Uh, so that's where you're seeing that upward pressure. Any questions on that? Okay. Um, so the next few pages, we're going to give you what we call what-if scenarios. And so that's going to be for groups that feel maybe they want to budget at a different assumed rate of return, like a 4.93 or 5.93%. Um, we give you those numbers, so you'll see those on page 10. And then on page 11, you will see a projection of those numbers at those same assumed rate of returns out for the next six years. I do want to draw your attention to the top column there with the 6.93%. You can see for the valuation year ending in 2027, for your rates in 2029, that's when that loss from '22 will be fully recognized and you start to see your funded level go back up. Um, now that's assuming that there's, you know, not a significant down market between now and then. Um, and that if the assumptions are reasonably met, but, um, that is projected to start going back up. The next page, page 12, similar information, but it takes you out a little bit farther. So you can see in the top graph here that the funded percentage, you're projected to be at 100% funded at about 2037. Um, and that is when the fixed amortization from, in 2015, MERS also moved from a rolling amortization to a fixed. That's when that, um, lump of unfunded liability will be paid off. And then, so you'll see from the graph below that, where we talk about the estimated employer contribution, township, township contributions. Um, you are projected to climb to about 450,000 per year, um, while you pay off that unfunded liability. And then you fall down in about 2037 to a little over 100,000. Um, that 100,000 is going to represent what we call normal cost. And the normal cost represents the cost to grant another year of service to the employees in the plans. Um, that's, and I won't stop at every page, I promise. We'll skip through with you, but page thirteen, that is table one. So that's where we get a breakdown of those rates that we saw earlier in the report. So you can see that your general employees and your fire, the allocated costs there, and then the estimated annual contribution for twenty twenty-six of about three hundred and thirty thousand. Table two on page fourteen, that's going to show you your benefit provisions in each of your divisions, no changes from twenty-three to twenty-four. Next page, table three. This page is your participant summary. So this is where we look at those that are in the plan. You had, you lost three actives in the plan and gained three retirees. With that, another reason that you're seeing an increased cost is that the retiree payroll did increase by a hundred and forty-five thousand. And we do project for some of that, sometimes when there's heavy retirements in one year, that can impact the cost. Table four, that is your planned assets in market value. Table five on page seventeen, that is the flow of assets in and out of your plan. What we really look for here is we like to see that the assets coming into the plan exceed those coming out of the plan. So for incoming assets, you were about at two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Outgoing, you had two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. However, with the investment income, you had four hundred and fifty-nine thousand coming into the plan. Page eighteen, table six. This is another way to display that funded level for you, broken down by division. So you can see your general employees are seventy-eight point three percent funded, and then your fire is sixty-two point two. Page nineteen, starts table seven. This is just historical information, where you can see the history of the funded level, assets and liabilities in the plan. Same thing for tables eight and nine on the next few pages, just broken down by the individual divisions. So your general employees and your fighter. If there's no questions on those tables, we can skip to page twenty-two. And that gives you your amortization schedules. So I mentioned before that MERS moved from a rolling amortization to a fixed in twenty fifteen with the twenty fifteen valuation. So you are on a ten-year. You can see how that's declined one year each year. Same thing on the next page, that's just broken down for your fire division as well. They are also on the ten-year amortization. Page twenty-four is your gas fee information that we give you, so your auditors will probably look for that. Page twenty-six, this is again an historical page, so how the benefits have changed in each of your divisions. Page twenty-eight, this is talking about the assumption that the actuaries use, and this is based off of the experience of your plan. When someone goes to retire and they may have payouts or higher wages, how much we expect that final average compensation, which is used in that retirement calculation to increase. So you are at one point five percent, and that is very standard. And that brings me to the next notable page is the last page of the report. And that is what you need for your state reporting if you're required to fill out Form fifty-five seventy-two. And that is the whole report that I'd have prepared.
Well, I appreciate you coming tonight. It's nice to see you again.
You too.
I know, and I appreciate Clerk Flintoff, we worked earlier this year. I know you brought up to have the fire contributions increased, at least by some of those members per the contract, since they, the fire is ultimately where we're lagging a little bit behind the general employee pool. So hopefully we'll see over the next couple of years where that starts to catch up a little bit more.
And let us know. We're happy to run any internal numbers to help you make the decisions you need. They take about fifteen to thirty business days if there's anything we can do.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the valuation of the township's pension liability for fiscal year end twenty-five, as prepared by GRS.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor say aye. Oppose? None? Motion passes six zero. Motion passes six zero. Okay, and two, possible action, next steps regarding offer of agreement to downtown authority to share captured assessed value of villages for parks, fire, public transit, and open space preservation. Clerk Flintoff, you prepared this? Would you like to?
Sure, jointly prepared by myself and then with the board designees Kathleen and David. Briefly, as, you know, we've, we've talked about this at the board table since June twenty-fourth. We've talked about it internally with our treasurer, supervisor, attorney in earnest since the beginning of this year and internally before that with the prior elected officials around, I don't know, I think November, October of last year is when it initially came to our attention. And I would note certainly the impetus for this question emerging and getting the input from our interim finance director, our bond counsel in looking at the village language that the voters adopted. They flagged that there was some ambiguity in it, that it could be interpreted as being subject to DDA capture, when in fact the intention, the conversations over multiple years, financial projections were based on no such capture. As everybody knows, in years past, the DDA has never captured fire because it was more consistently clearly interpreted as being under PA thirty-three special assessment. So started this process, we've talked about it for months. Ryan Gillian, the attorney, has been working on a proposed solution. I want to thank Mariah and Jim Fink, who have done an excellent job. I believe brought us a well-researched proposal, which we discussed in earnest, June twenty-fourth. We made some modifications to it. And on July eighth, unanimously, all seven of these township board members determined to send it to the DDA for their consideration and appointed trustees, Brandt and Reed to take it from there. So I'll turn it over to them for an update on where we're at.
Which one? Are you ready, or do you want trustee Reedo?
We can talk about the update that's in the packet. So this is an update from prior meeting on July the twenty-eighth, to answer any questions.
Wait a minute, where, where are you? There's an update of eight-three twenty-twenty-five, is that? Okay. I just heard July.
You're saying that this date is incurred.
No, you said there's an update from July twenty-second.
No, I thought I said July twenty-eighth.
I might have confused that. Sorry, go on.
Okay. So, update is that during that meeting, the DDA briefly discussed the township's proposal to share the four village captures, fire, transit, parks, and obesity. DDA then discussed the fire village in detail with no discussion of three other villages in the agreement. And then subsequently, the DDA passed a motion to sport sharing the fire village with the township. They directed the DDA attorney to write a counter agreement to the original township agreement. To our knowledge, the DDA attorney sent a one paragraph addition to the original agreement and asked for deletion of some where asked statements. A full counter proposal was not presented. And then further, based on the direction of the Southwater Trustees, myself and trustee Reed viewed the DDA as rejecting the township's agreement. And I specifically point out the motion language, which is clearly giving, gave us direction to present and discuss this proposal to the downtown development authority and to return to the board of trustees with a recommendation, next steps, on July twenty-second. This language is significant, which I hear people not understanding the language clearly, and I reinforce this. And this was a seven-zero unanimous board approval to present and discuss. There's nothing, I had no authority to negotiate anything. That was not our, that was not our mandate. So that's why I go to these meetings and I say, do you have any questions? I'm not authorized to negotiate. You have to read the language strictly. In fact, no one from the board of trustees was authorized to negotiate anything. Our attorney was not authorized to negotiate that agreement. So what you, the public to understand, that's what I carried forward is, here's the agreement. Would you consider this agreement? And what I heard back from the DDA was, in the first meeting, they talked about fire. In the second meeting, they seemed to, they had agreement on returning the fire funds, but there was no discussion on the other four villages. And based on the direction I was given, that then is a rejection of the agreement.
Anyone else? David, do you have more?
I think Kathleen covered it pretty solidly.
The only other piece of background I might ask is, at whatever time.
And not to put you on the spot right now, Mariah, but I have heard a lot of things said at the DDA meeting and in public comment about, you know, there's an indication, and maybe it wasn't intended, but at the DDA meeting yesterday, I heard at least Jeff Harshy have the understanding that the DDA attorney had said that the unanimously approved agreement was not lawful. And, and I don't, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Ryan, at all, but I definitely heard Jeff have that understanding. He said, hey, even if I wanted to support this, I can't do it because my town, my DDA attorney has stated that. And, I mean, certainly good attorneys can have differences of opinions. But I just want to say, you know, I know how many months you and Jim worked on this. Do you want to, would you mind just commenting on the, the law and the basis for this agreement? It would be helpful if you would.
It's already on, Mariah.
Well, Ryan Sweeney would probably agree with me that one of the things that we like the most about our jobs is the difference of opinion. Right? So, and, and part of what he and I are doing when we're both looking at this statute is, is what we refer to as statutory interpretation. The way that I read the statute is different than the way that, that Mr. Sweeney is reading the statute. I, I do think that there is a, there, there is a section, a very specific section that he and I have a disagreement over. I'm confident that the way we drafted the agreement is allowed by law, that we don't need to have another public hearing, that the DDA is authorized to enter into revenue sharing agreements with the municipality or other taxing authorities. The best example of that is libraries. There's, there's an entire section about library agreements. So I, you know, I appreciate what Mr. Sweeney is saying. I'm definitely not saying he's wrong. I'm just saying we have a difference of opinion. He and I have had about thirty seconds of conversation about that. We've not had a lot of time to talk with one another to, I mean, I'm sure I can convince him. But, yeah, so, so I'm, I'm confident in the agreement, but I understand that he's representing his clients. And that's where we are.
Thank you. Yeah, so attending the meetings, both as a board member and then the CEO of the DDA, because that's my statutory duty. There was a presentation that was, okay, I think there's a big lack of communication. There's a lot of disconnect. And there was a presentation that was supposed to go to the DDA to be on the agenda for some board members to present. And somehow that got lost or was not included in the packet. I don't know because I am not the chair or vice chair of the DDA, so that's not my realm. But anyways, there was, I don't know what happened there. But I don't think there was anything nefarious. I think that this is, with the DDA, there was a lot of things that were thrown at the DDA and a lot of it migrated over to, well, the dissolution of the DDA. So why are we doing this? You know, and, and this, this is a new DDA. It is. There may be some board members that have been on this authority for a while, but there's a lot of new. I am new, Ryan. I mean, this is a whole new DDA. We're starting fresh, first budget and CIP that we've done because some our finance director, manager, deputy treasurer, whatever the title was, she did that for years. So, to say that the DDA rejected the township's agreement, I feel is not correct. The DDA was trying to pull things apart, so to understand at the same time, focused on and a big focus of, well, the DDA is going to be dissolved. I think that there could be better communication and better collaboration. And if there's, the township attorneys only had thirty seconds to have a discussion, then, and now we're here. That didn't give them enough time. The DDA was not presented properly. And thank you, trustee Noel, when you came and attended and you explained from your point of view, I guess. I don't know, I don't know if you had something in front of you. But then even attorney Sweeney said, now, you know, this is what, this makes more sense. And I'm sorry that the board members did not have enough time to do their presentation, and I would like that to be corrected. Because I think that this is, this is really turning out to be a big drama fest. And this is just, we need to just collaborate and communicate better. And I would like to see the, the emails from the trustees to the DDA and the presentation that they had, because we did not see that.
What, what are you referring to?
Well, from my understanding, that trustee Brandt and trustee Reed emailed somebody, and I'm assuming it's the chairs, for, with their presentation to be included into that packet, for it to be presented to the DDA. And it was not included. They, I know you had some papers with you, and I don't know if you, you know, gave them out to everybody, but, and you only had what's, a few minutes to present.
And I, I just want to clear up the record here. There was no, nothing that the trustees, to my knowledge, presented to the DDA that hadn't been approved unanimously on July eighth. So that.
Okay, but it didn't, the DDA wasn't in the packet.
Certainly. I think, I think communication, it's, it's a little embarrassing that, you know, we can have, you know, four board members in a room and multiple internal emails and not be communicating when everything's published. So, you know, I, I just want to say that I think what David and Kathleen, my understanding, David and Kathleen is what was shared was the unanimously approved proposed agreement. Is that correct? Okay.
That was, that was your presentation?
At the meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, I just want to say, I've heard a couple of comments that there was something new. I remember in a DDA meeting, Gillian, you said, what's this? What's this? I've not seen this. And I, I just want to be. Yeah, it was the, the same document we've been talking about since June 24th and internally for months before that.
Okay.
Thank you.
However, it was to be presented to the DDA and the DDA needed to have that. That's where I was coming from, because we have a lot of meetings and a lot of emails. So it's nice to have it right in front of us.
Okay, so I'd like to comment on that. David Reed passed out to every member of the DDA, the three documents that we gave. At our last board meeting, Madam Supervisor, you asked Treasurer Yable to take those same documents and put them in the second meeting agenda. That did not happen. So in multiple cases, hard copy, electronic, we tried to get this information to the DDA. That's not a lack of communication. That's a lack of execution. So let's be, let's not, let's say that.
Okay, but then to say that, but this, you view the DDA as rejecting the township's agreement? And I don't view it that way. I, I remember that the DDA wanted to start with the fire millage and also the main focus, justifiably, went to, they're going to dissolve the DDA. That's what's on the, you know.
That was not part of my presentation to the DDA. My direction from this board, seven zero, was to present and discuss the proposal. I did that. I gave next steps at the July 22 meeting. I'm giving next steps today. I've detailed factually what happened during those two meetings. There was never a discussion of the three other villages. I got no feeling that the, the DDA was interested in that part of the agreement.
If I remember correctly, we decided to start with the fire millage and then have discussion with the others later.
We, I had, I had no authority to negotiate. If you cannot read this language and you can interpret something different, please enlighten me.
I don't remember negotiating. It was the DDA that had chosen to start with the fire millage and later revisit the others.
That would be a negotiation.
I think part of the, maybe part of the confusion is that a, a counterproposal can be a rejection of the original proposal. And, and I think that that's what trustee Brandt is getting at, is that when the DDA talked about a counterproposal, that was interpreted as a rejection of the original agreement, which, which is.
Yes. I did not know that. And it didn't seem, seem that way from, yeah. Go ahead, Treasurer Yable.
So I, I guess, once again, I can take ownership for what, what I did or did not do. Certainly, I made this motion. It was supported by Clerk Flintoff. I read it. It does not, I, I agree with trustee Brandt. It does not contemplate having a negotiation or authorizing anyone, whether it be trustees Reed or Brandt, or our attorney, or the supervisor or myself, or the board as a whole, really, to discuss. Well, it says to discuss, but not to negotiate. So certainly hindsight's 2020. Maybe that, maybe that's what we should have said at the time. I can't go back and fix that. As far as, you know, the document not getting uploaded, I'll take responsibility for that. I, I do have, you know, I am human. I, I tried to do the best I can. But I, I don't think this is worth beating, you know, our fellow board members up on, you know, what has happened has happened. Whether we, whether we individually like it or not at this point.
Yeah, so present and discuss this proposal, but it wasn't presented to us and said, you accept all four and agree to it, or it's a rejection. Okay, Clerk Flintoff.
Sure.
Can I, I haven't said anything.
Oh, yes, you're, you're correct. You haven't.
Okay. So I watched the July 14th DDA meeting. I was deeply concerned with what we observed. And because of that, I, I attended in person the July 28 meeting just to get a better understanding of what the, the different perspectives were. And then I learned about the special meeting that occurred yesterday after the fact. So I, I did not attend. And I think there's a lot of responsibility that can be shared with exactly what happened with not getting the materials on the DDA agenda. I'm not going to go into comments yet about the specifics, but I've got more comments later. And I do have one question for Jessica there. This has been mentioned several times. It was my understanding that the DDA did not have a capital improvement plan and does not have a capital improvement plan at this time. So I see Kathleen nodding and Ryan nodding. But then we've heard from residents tonight that there was, there has been a capital improvement plan at different times. Where are we at? Where is the fact?
So, you know, and I understand why people are both saying two different things here is because what we've had is a capital planning process, a budgeting process. I've, I've been glad over the last few years, we've had a more robust budgeting and capital planning process in the township and trying to get better and better. The DDA certainly participated. We adopted the capital plan of the DDA as submitted. When it comes down to what qualifies as a capital improvement, you know, most of what was in the budget, it was all budget items. Right? So it was, you know, you know, things that weren't over, you know, $50,000 in value with long-term capital improvement. So the capital plan was adopted by this board. And it, it, it is included in a section, but it is $0 in capital. So that, that is why. Certainly, the budget, you know, was, was full of funding and adopted. And, and, and the capital plan, you know, nothing that was in that, original items, I think. Gillian, I remember being in a meeting with Jennifer Tanaka, you, Ally, maybe Ryan, at some point, and we're going through it. And, and Ally, our, you know, from Plant Moran, was just kind of noting, you know, that's, that's not capital. That is capital. It's sort of a categorization. Right? So nothing was taken out, but nothing qualified as a capital improvement, meaning a, you know, a building, an asset, something, you know, roads, trucks, obviously, things like that. So currently, as reviewed in public meetings, discussed and adopted by this board. I believe we adopted the capital plan back in December or January. The DDA capital plan is $0.
Thank you.
Does that match your memory, Ryan's?
Correct. I would, I would agree with that.
Thank you. Okay.
Different question.
Sure.
I watched most of the DDA meeting on the 28th, I think. And, you know, again, I, I was just struck by the difference of, you know, the legal advice that the DDA was getting was very different than my understanding of, of the law. So I think that's one complicating factor for both bodies. And I think that may have informed the motion. But when I heard the motion from the DDA, you know, I, I noticed the word allocate. My understanding, Mariah, is that, you know, there, there wasn't a counterproposal, a couple paragraphs, but that there seemed to be, and maybe this is what you were referring to before, a kind of difference of legal opinion, that the DDA would somehow need to combine funds. And, and I was also, I had a question at the 7/28 DDA meeting when the question of review by bond counsel came up. And I, I had a question about, because I think the motion, and I appreciate making motions on the spot at the board table. You know, I'm famous for it and I always regret it later because it's hard to be precise. But when I heard the discussion about review by bond counsel and does, would the fire station construction fit into the DDA plan? There continues to be a difference of interpretation, kind of a, what I think about as the difference between the purpose of the DDA and the plan, why we would need to combine money and why the DDA agreement with the township might need to be reviewed by bond counsel. So my question, Mariah, is from your understanding, from what you could discern, was the DDA in fact counter proposing sharing in the same way that we unanimously proposed to them? Or was it a combining with some continued involvement of the DDA?
That wasn't, that's not completely clear to me. And, and like I said, you know, Mr. Sweeney and I didn't have an extended conversation about it. I didn't have the authority to start negotiating that with him. I think I asked him a couple of questions when it first came. But, yeah, I don't have a, I don't have a complete handle on that. Thank you.
Just a general comment on that. I think that members of the DDA were confused about that resolution. And there were, there was a lot of back and forth. People didn't exactly know what to do.
You mean the motion?
The motion. Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, the motion. No, the final one at the end where the word allocate it was used. And I didn't have an issue with the word allocate in that. You know, it's not my choice. I just think that there was a lot of back and forth and confusion about the wording.
Yeah, there might not have been a shared understanding.
I don't think there was. I mean, others, I, I don't know about the others, but they were all there too. And I, I don't know. Oh, one more question. The bond counsel deadlines. We've been asked by residents here tonight, what's the hurry with doing anything tonight? Could you talk about the deadlines for the bond counsel? That we're going to be up against?
Which, I, I was going to say, if you reference K-10, it actually has as an attachment to item K-10 tonight, a draft timeline for working with Bendinsky and Company, the financial advisors. You can see that a couple of things are either already in process or are going to happen in the next one to two weeks. And you can see a list of which participants. There's a key down at the bottom, or sorry, rather, top of page two that says who's doing what and when. So we hope to have this, you know, worked out here in the next two months. But really, there's a lot of things that have to happen and the board needs to authorize quite a bit of things pretty soon.
So I win. Like, what's?
The, the bond resolution to actually is, is penciled in for September 9. I think, you know, also tomorrow, the board has a special meeting, you know, regarding union negotiations, which is relevant to this because, you know, certainly the overall budget, you know, the fire guidance committee worked on. The chief and Rebecca and I are meeting with Brian Cam. I want to relook at that kind of global picture. All of these deadlines aligned with the OHM Architect Bond Counsel, all of that on the fire piece. And, you know, David and Kathleen, from their July 22 update, you know, had, you know, recommended to the board. It seemed that the board had four options. You know, get the signed agreement by mid-August tonight, cancel the Fire Station 2 project, go back to voters. You know, we let that deadline pass. We knew that was 4:00 PM today. So we had decided not to go back to voters at our last meeting, you know, leaving three ideas. I would just also say about the original sharing agreement. Oh, sure. Sorry. Sorry, pardon, compete. I would also just note with the original, you know, sharing agreement, the financial projection there also kind of brought out some of these other issues too. Certainly, you know, the DDA brings in as much revenue as the general fund does from property taxes every year, just to give you a sense. You know, and, and with the number of public services that the general fund is able to provide, you know, our entire public safety, assessing, tax, everything we do here, we, we are able to do with that amount of money. So I also think doing these financial projections and, and looking at this stuff, I would just say for me, the item subsequent to this one is not, is not tightly tied to this. Certainly going through this experience, getting a chance to kind of understand more. I've had some longstanding kind of concerns over the last few years of the kind of capacity of the DDA and have, you know, been, been hopeful, appreciative of the volunteers, new members, their involvement in the budgeting, but have just come to understand the issue as, as more of a structural issue. And a lot of the comments that Ryan Sweeney made, made me do some research and better understand the difference between the plan and the purpose of the DDA, which I admittedly probably should have educated myself on when I took office in 2019. But now much, much better understand the structural problems with it, with the way we have it set up.
Circling, circling back to the word allocate. My meager understanding of government finances, the word allocate. How about now? That better? Okay. I want to clarify, in my mind, the word allocate. My understanding, meager understanding of government finances, the word, if something is allocated, that means it's, has to happen every year. It's not a permanent thing. So every year, the, the money has to be reallocated. Is that correct?
I, I don't have a, I mean, appropriate is, is the legal word, appropriate and budget. Allocate is, you know, used colloquially. People probably mean different things by it. It's typically used to mean budget, you know, authorized but maintain control of it. It's not the same as sharing and the language in the agreement that we approved unanimously.
Okay.
Any other comments? Or contributions?
Are we going to continue to discuss?
Do you have more?
I can say more.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so in general, I have concerns that the DDA hasn't followed some specific guidelines, like the capital improvement plan, required annual reports. I've told some of you this already, so it's not news. But, pardon?
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sure.
Sure.
Right into your.
Sure. I have concerns that the DDA hasn't followed specific guidelines. For example, the requirement of a capital improvement plan, the requirement of annual I'm under the impression, from discussions with other board members, that there had been some communication over the years, these last three, three years maybe, with the DDA about this, these issues. Is that, is that correct, Jessica?
The township has changed, but yes, certainly with the prior DDA chair, and at this board table, certainly at length with Treasurer Yapal, before he was Treasurer Yapal, prior to then, you know, Supervisor Hathaway's appointment of Businessperson Yapal to the DDA. Certainly, Gillian has done a great job over the years of documenting, you know, the, the changes that we need to make in how the DDA is administered. You know, because our DDA is so different than other DDAs in, you know, it's a, you know, we audit it as part of the township, it's, it's a township fund, it's certainly its own legal entity. But because we've been, like a lot of things, we established it thirty-seven years ago. I mean, we were a lot smaller. We were able to handle a lot of our operations in, you know, a less, less formal way. So, yeah, certainly, some things at the board table, I, I can't, that's all I am knowledgeable about. I know Gillian and Ryan and others have, have worked hard and certainly put a lot of effort into looking at the plan and what can be done with the DDA plan. But, but yeah, I mean, you know, I think the, you know, we, we had it at the board table when we talked about the, the paving of the roads, the Dino Drive, the other things. We've had those conversations at this table. And, and I don't fault the DDA members at all. I just want to be very, very clear about that. I think it's our responsibility to properly resource our committees.
I am concerned about the judgment that was used in calling the special meeting and considering going into closed session for purchase of the Goodrich Theaters. I think that a decision like that required more time and discussion, evaluation. And it almost appears like this was a knee-jerk response to the possibility that the board was going to dissolve the DDA. And that is concerning to me.
Trustee Reed?
Yeah. Kathy mentioned her concerns, and this whole thing started because of the issue with the fire, with the fire millage. And it caused me to do some research and start looking into the DDA. And, and I found one thing that is troubling to me, that our ordinance, our ordinance for the DDA requires that at the end of the fiscal year, any surplus money be returned to the township so that it can be redistributed to the taxing entities. So when we talk about this cash surplus, that was, I think, Mr. Sweeney was mentioning that there's, they have this big fund of money that they can use now, but they're not supposed to have that money. That money should be returned at the end of every year. They should, I think it's basically, they start, my impression is, I may be wrong, but every year, they start with a zero balance. They get their tax money, they do their projects, whatever's left gets returned. That's, that's the way I read that ordinance. But for some reason, and if you look at last year's collections and last year or this year's collections and presumed collections, there's about a million dollar surplus. So if you look at the current surplus, which, it depends on how you calculate it, it's either six million or four million, but regardless, that's either be somewhere between six and, between four and six years, if you look at this year's surplus, between four and six years, that the money has not been returned to the township to be redistributed to the, to the various taxing authorities. So that, that's one thing that really concerns me, is that we're sitting on all this money, and it's not our money, it's the various organizations, various taxing authorities' money. And so to say that we have all this money, that we can now do all these projects, I think is a fallacy. We don't have that money, it's not supposed to be there.
Well, and I read the statute, and it have to, I've read through everything, but it's been a while. As you know, at the DDA meetings, I've been asking questions, a lot of different things, and, and encouraging everybody to read the statutes, the ordinances, the plans and, and whatnot. But I pulled up that section of the ordinance, or statute, sorry, statute, and it does state that if there, if there's a project that can be paid for, there's something else at the last couple of sentences, and I don't have it in front of me right now. So that's where I would like the attorneys to review regarding that money, or what you're stating. I actually pulled it up on my computer at home before I rushed off to the other thing I had to do, and I don't, I didn't have time to print it, so.
It's in the, it's in the ordinance. That's part of your packet tonight.
Oh.
There is a language.
I did read it, but it was.
So the township is responsible for paying the obligations of the DDA? If the DDA is dissolved, and after those obligations have been paid, then the amount that's left is considered surplus and has to be redistributed to the taxing, I'm sorry, you have a question?
Um, it, but that sounds different than what Trustee Reed is saying.
I think you're answering a different question, Mariah.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't.
Let me read, it's fourteen dash eighty-two. Any surplus money in the project fund at the end of the year, as shown by the annual report of the authority, shall be paid by the authority to the township treasurer or county treasurer, as shown by the annual report of the authority, as the case may be, and rebated to each of the appropriate taxing jurisdictions.
Mariah, I read you this earlier this afternoon, if you recall.
I concur with David, but if you want to take a minute to look at it, Mariah, this is our current ordinance.
I, I do concur, I think a lot of what comes back to this is, I think we've all realized over the last year, that there's a lot of ordinances and a lot to our ordinances, and sometimes reviewing our ordinances would give us some more information.
And, and I, again, I, I just want to say, like, I, I really think that we were operating with this idea with, with guidance for our DDA, and certainly, that initial infusion with bonding and the refunding bonds, outstanding liabilities are now about two point three million. We have at least another three million with, with more coming in. When I look at the fund balance policy that we've implemented, you know, for the General Fund, you know, it far exceeds it. Now, certainly, if there were a capital obligation, right, like a capital plan for that three million, not just something that hypothetically could be done. So Jan, when I hear your vision of Jackson Road, I love it, I totally love it. And I can imagine, you know, us creating a TIF that has that purpose. You know, I can imagine, you know, I'm completely supportive of three hundred North Z TIF, of doing pilots, of doing other things. But this particular TIF was set up for a particular purpose, to extend the water and sewer system and broaden Jackson Road. And it's a really extraordinary power that a little board of trustees like ours can have, to impose a TIF, to say, hey, voters, you may have voted, you know, to, to tax yourself, what are we at, thirty-four mills over the years? I mean, we're a, a very, we're a community who really appreciates the public services, the public safety and mental health millage, Community College, W I S D, all these things we support. And it's an extraordinary power for a little township board to be able to sit down in nineteen eighty-eight, pass an ordinance, and say, we're going to capture some of that money. The voters never established a TIF. The voters voted for all these millages, it's this legislative body that establishes a TIF. I do want to say, there were a couple comments made, not by DDA members, but I heard at some point in public comment, that money would go back to the state. That is not true. The, the money didn't come from the state, the money came from all of us who pay taxes. The purpose of a TIF is to capture that tax money, meet that purpose, and then for that TIF to end. And if there, I think TIFs are great tools. I'm committed to the Boulevard, I am appreciative of the amazing work, changing that Boulevard, transformed SIO forever. But I think that we need different tools for new times. I think it's not responsible governance to use an outmoded tool, where the purpose is for these two things, and then to say, well, could we stretch it for this, and stretch it for that? And I see really great volunteers kind of, almost like spitballing ideas for what the DDA can do. And it is not good governance to have anybody elected or appointed sitting on money where there is no plan. The purpose has been met, and that's why we've had some examples of this the last couple of years. I, I also want to say, and I think just, not through any bad intention, but I want to be clear, the DDA's purpose is not to, it is still to carry out that public service of expanding the Boulevard and water and sewer, period. I think that some of the, you know, budgeted proposals of the DDA recently, I, you know, did not object to these, but I certainly would not have supported them if I were at the policymaking table, of, say, subsidizing the business fees for fire inspections. It's business owners' responsibilities to pay for fire inspections, to make sure that their customers and their employees are safe. And to use taxes for fees, I, I think is poor public policy. So I, I will say, I have seen the DDA, certainly, I think, in earlier years, it had much more focus. I've looked at the historical fund balance, the historical expenditures, and probably in the last, I don't know, three, six years, somewhere around there, it's just sort of demonstrated the perils of having a DDA that has already met its purpose. I think it's poor governance for this board to continue having a DDA that's met its purpose. I think, I think a public commenter said, maybe it should have been done before, and, and I don't disagree. I mean, I, I think it may have been justified, you know, a few years ago. So, that's all.
So, you do have your hand up. Sometimes I can't see it.
Yep.
Treasurer Yapal.
So, two other things just to keep in mind, I, depending, I guess, on what happens shortly, we still have commercial paper outstanding, so it's going to be a matter of, I'll reach out if the DDA is just discontinued, use a different word, to our commercial paper representative tomorrow, to see what our options are for that. Right now, it's up in September, late September and February. We also still have, the DDA also still has, rather, an open grant with the Holmes Brewery campus, so that's something else the board likely will have to take over at some point.
What are the current contracts that the DDA has? Landscaping?
Landscaping, primarily. No, KBK is no longer involved.
So just landscape?
This is year one of a three-year contract.
So, going back to the N two, because I think we kind of went into the second, the N three, little bit of discussion there, but N two, what is, there's not really, it just says a recommendation, there's not a motion, this is, wait a minute, am I in the right one? N two, yeah. The agreement. It just says a recommendation, Township Attorney drafted and approved agreement and incorporated revisions adopted unanimously on July eighth. And then the interim finance director finds that the under-proposed agreement, there's a couple, and then there's a couple of attachments, so possible action, but I don't know what the action would be.
The motion really comes with N three.
Well, but they're two different items.
I know.
That's what I'm, because it says, for this one, item type, possible action, but there's not a resolution, or, I'm sorry, a motion.
And I was just going to clarify for everybody who doesn't have the packet in front of them, they're the same attachments as from prior meetings, same proposed agreement and same projected financials under that scenario.
Because I'd also say, Supervisor Carey, I know you called me earlier today and requested N three to be tabled. I did make that request at the top of the meeting, and there was no support for it, so it did not happen, that's why it's still being discussed.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so there's this agreement, proposed agreement is adopted by V O T. on July eight, twenty twenty-five for presentation to, to DDA. So what do we do with this agenda item?
Put this on. This agenda item says next steps regarding an offer of agreement. In, Trustee Reed, in my updates, we state that the agreement was, in our view, rejected. There are no next steps. Under the timelines that we were given, to bring something back to the board by the July twenty-second.
I guess I'd throw the, the idea out there and see if anyone else on the board supports it, but after hearing comments from the rest of the board, my suggestion would be, you know, seeing if we could have the Township Attorney and the DDA Attorney work on a revised agreement, but I, I don't know if I have support for that here at this point.
So, motion, Ryan, is to, can you restate it, please?
Give me a minute to write this up and read it. Motion to authorize the Township Attorney and the DDA Attorney to negotiate the value-sharing agreement originally adopted by the Board. originally adopted by the Board of Trustees on July 8, 2025. My wording for that comes from the header of the original document that was agreed to by the Board of Trustees.
Where are you getting that header information?
That is the proposed agreement. It's paraphrasing the title of that document.
I will support. Roll call vote, please.
Do we have a discussion?
Sure, I thought we had a discussion.
What is the, I mean, because this effectively has been the problem. What are the parameters that you would propose? Imagine that we could hold space and time and that we hadn't been talking about this
Yeah.
in depth for three months, together for nine months
Yeah.
at this board table since June 24. So let's suspend that right now. What are the parameters you would be proposing, Ryan?
That's a great question.
And if not specifically, because
I mean.
I mean, just sending people off to
Sending people off to negotiate.
Feel good about more negotiation.
As worse off as we are from before, because if we don't get very clear.
Some clear ideas, I don't know what they.
I think if we could, I think one answer would be we would have to have it done no later than August 26. If we don't have it done by August 26, we can't do it. I mean, that would be one thing, is making it time definite. I think that if this board wants to make it so all the captures have to be returned, we can talk about that. I'm fine with that idea being the requirement that all the captures for the township have to be returned. All captures of the township, specifically land preservation.
The four.
The four from the original agreement.
There's only three to be returned.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Right, I mean, there's been a legal debate. This all started with, you know, let's not, you know, there was this fuzzy language, and while I appreciate, you know, we all make mistakes, and certainly, you know, Jillian and me and Kathy and John were on the board, and we voted for it. And I, you know, regret not seeing the fuzzy language in that millage. You know, we certainly had nine months of conversation. So that's my responsibility. I don't appreciate, you know, the public calling us idiots for making mistakes, not that anybody in this room did, but, you know, but then to have the fuzzy language seized upon is something that I think has been unfortunate when we have, that has clearly never been the intention of this. So I don't know, Ryan. I think, I guess my question is, given the gulf between the legal interpretation that the DDA holds and the legal interpretation that this township board holds, do you have any parameters around that when it comes to sharing versus allocation, incorporation into the plan, et cetera?
I would be, I would be fine with, personally, I would be fine with the language that was drafted by the township attorney. My reading of the statute, I'm an attorney, is consistent with the township attorney's interpretation, but that requires the DDA to agree to it, which is the DDA's prerogative.
So the same agreement that we approved on July 8.
Which gets us back to the same place. Okay, well, I'm trying.
No, I know, and I appreciate that, Ryan. I do.
If anyone has other ideas, I'm game to hear them.
So, Ryan, just so I have the motion. Motion by Yable, support by Carey, to authorize township attorney and DDA attorney to negotiate the July 8 approved agreement.
I guess, I guess I withdraw the motion because it doesn't sound like I'm going to have support on it, and frankly, I'd rather not move forward at this point if it's not going to have support. Up to you.
No, I can.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can read the, I can read the room, and we're just not going to have a way to move forward on this, it seems, which is unfortunate. I'd still suggest tabling N3 until we can have a full body of the board, but once again, up for discussion.
So what are the next steps for this offer of agreement, then? Just, there's got to be a, or we just close this out and move on? Or just say, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
If you don't have a motion on the table, you just move to the next item.
Yep. All right. Thank you. So then let's move on to N3. Possible action, ordinance to repeal Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Article 14-2, downtown development authority. Clerk Flintoff, you prepared, excuse me, you prepared this, if you don't mind.
Sure, sure thing. You know, this, this came about with the report back initially at our last meeting as possible options, and certainly, this had not been, you know, top of mind. But after kind of talking about it, I think initially with David and kind of talking through this fire issue, but more broadly, doing our research into the DDA, and I just want to share a couple of things, and I appreciate this hinges on, you know, the DDA attorney has advised the DDA differently, that the law is different, that it's more about the plan, and that there's flexibility to do the things that, you know, Jan has described or others have described, and our township attorney has advised us that the purpose is the purpose. So certainly, the memo from Fink and Fink has been in here, as it was last time. The DDA purpose was to extend the water and sewer system and create the Jackson Road Boulevard. Arguably, I agree. Had this board been more attentive, we may have considered doing so earlier. I am supportive of TIFs. I am supportive of a DDA. I am supportive of economic development as a tool, but I think part of the reason why our DDA has not had as much activity, as much public service in the last few years is because they haven't had a clear direction. We've had department heads going over to the DDA to ask for money. I mean, that's not what a DDA is intended for. And so, again, it is not for the lack of smart, dedicated people on the DDA. I take responsibility as a board member and having a more robust finance team. I think had we had a more robust finance team, we would have been in compliance with the annual return of amounts that weren't obligated to the taxing units. And when you think about the logic there, David, it makes a lot of sense. You know, we are choosing to capture taxes that voters have voted on to go to specific public services, to hold them for a public purpose, those two purposes which have been met. I do believe that this move would be for good governance, for better governance, performance, efficiency, transparency. We've made a lot of progress. People have asked, why wouldn't the auditors catch that? Something like, is the DDA properly returning monies to taxing units is just beyond the scope of an annual financial audit. That is not something that's even covered in the audit. And I see I'm being giggled at, but I assure you, I'm telling the truth. So idly sitting on too much public money with no plan, that's on us. We shouldn't be doing that. That creates an environment that is ripe for poor use of taxpayer money. And that's what this is. It's captured, but it's taxpayer money. And the longer we sit on it, the longer it doesn't go to the public services that all of our voters think it's going to, the WCC. And when I think about these things, like a contribution to the township from the DDA to, you know, pay for sheriff services or something like that, that's wonderful. It can make sense, but I also think we're also capturing so much of the county mental health and public safety millage. And we are just capturing too much money beyond what we needed to complete the purpose of this particular DDA. I have been uncomfortable with some of the recent DDA authorizations and appropriations. We discussed some of this. I think largely it's because the DDA is looking for ideas, and the DDA has been open a soccer field back there. Different, different things that have been brought to the board table. When you look at the decisions that this township has made for spending DDA funds, such as paving Dino Drive, it's a fine thing. It needed to be paved. But how would a resident pave their drive? They would form an SAD, and all the property owners on that road would pay into that SAD to get it paved. Instead, we're subsidizing the businesses on that road by using the captured taxpayer funds to pave that. That has no bearing on Jackson Road or the water and sewer system. Again, the idea of the DDA taking captured taxpayer monies to pay for fees, we all know the fundamentals of our democracy and taxing. Taxes are not fees. Fees are charges for services. And to use voter taxes to subsidize the fees for businesses, I think, is inappropriate. And then yesterday, you know, certainly, and Ryan and I, I, you know, enjoy working with Ryan so much, day in and day out, and I'm very proud of the work we're doing together. So he, he knows about this. But Ryan has shared, we've talked about the special meeting of the DDA for the, you know, possible purchase. And I had said, you know, hypothetically, you know, certainly, I wouldn't want to have a DDA who would suddenly meet and authorize the fund balance for something. I didn't actually think that would happen. I'm sort of a plan for the worst, hope for the best person. And then yesterday, it was confirmed that the special meeting had a possible purpose. It certainly was not discussed and wound up not happening, but had a possible purpose to authorize, I don't know how many millions, you know, for a major property, so that all of the captured taxes would have been gone. The DDA has sole authority to authorize monies, a separate legal right to do that. But I'm still mindful that it's public money, and it's taxpayer money. So I will say a bit about, you know, implementation. It's set forth in the ordinance. There isn't any relationship to HVAC. There hasn't been poor budgeting by the township. The money is in Fund 494 segregated, and it would remain as such. The statute's very clear in the ordinance that it would remain. The investments would mature. The cash would transfer from the DDA treasurer to our township treasurer, who would keep it safe and sound until the investments mature, until the liabilities are paid. And then proportionately, it would then, at that point, the remainders be returned to the taxing units as, as set forth in the proposed projection there. So I hear that emotions are heated. I will say again, I think it is a better policy for good governance, for responsible fiscal management, and for allowing the board to better manage things. I want to thank all the volunteers and everybody's good work. It's not about the people, and it's not for lack of effort. I believe it's a policy change that's needed by the township.
Anything else?
Nope.
Anyone else? Trustee Brandt?
Sure. Many of you know that I have been a dedicated citizen for the past four years. Dedicated meeting that I've attended most of the committee meetings and the Board of Trustees meeting. I have stated repeatedly that my opinion is the mission of the DDA has been completed. I said it in board meetings, I said it at the DDA. I said paving Dino Drive is a subsidy to businesses. I stated my objections to that. One of the DDA members during that discussion agreed with me, stated, thought the businesses should pay for their own roads. If not, let the road go as it may. That person is here tonight. So I'm, I've been of the opinion for a long time that the DDA has fulfilled their mission. I agree with the comments that it's not good governance to hold taxpayers' dollars to do something special. That's an undefined project. That's, that shouldn't even be stated. You want to do something special. The DDA should be doing what its purpose is. I think they got away from that. I remember at least two years ago, prior chairman presented the idea of expanding Jackson Road to Parker, and the entire DDA said no. They all agreed that was not necessary. So that would have been continuing the purpose, but that was not taken up. The purpose was not to make Z, North Zeb Road a boulevard. I think it's clearly stated it was for Jackson Road. So my position has not changed. This is who I was as a citizen. This is who I am as an elected official. I was, I believe I was elected on those positions. So I concur.
Trustee Reed?
Well, I read a statement at yesterday's DDA meeting, I'm not going to read it again here. But one thing stands out to me that Act 57, the authority with which the DDA is formed, specifically says that upon completion of its goals, the authority shall be dissolved. Now, it seems to me that we're about 10 years, or maybe longer, behind on that, because I think the goals of the DDA were accomplished, I don't know, 2015, 2012? And the goals being to cure the water problem, prevent the deterioration of the road, and stop the decline of the property values. Those were the goals that were stated in the forming of the DDA. Now, I said that last, yesterday afternoon, and Mr. Sweeney suggested that I read. What I thought he told me to read was the 2008 Economic Strategic Plan, which I did. It's a 91-page document, and I only got through the first few pages. But in the first few pages, it repeatedly talks about the intersections of Jackson Boulevard and Wagner, Zeb, and Baker. That's it. And that's the 2008 Economic Strategic Plan. And this is only in the first, I only got through the first five or six pages. And so in my mind, those intersections are fairly well-developed. And so in my mind, those intersections are fairly well-developed. So even, even in my mind, they've accomplished the actual goals that they were asked to do, as well as goals that they set for themselves, which are not part of the ordinance, but they set for themselves. But see, the issue is, of course, as you look further into, as you look further into the economic plan, there's a list of the 20 top employers in the township. And this is the danger of having a plan that you don't update. Because this was formed in 2000, this plan was written in 2008. This is 2025. And of those 20 companies, three of them have moved to Ann Arbor, one has moved to Dexter, and five are out of business. So of those 20 companies, there are only 11 left in the township. So that's the danger of having a plan that you don't update. And so, and again, we update, and you're supposed to update our master plan every five years. So this, this plan, there's a 2006 plan, and there's the 2008 Strategic Plan. And those are 17, 18, 19 years old. And so that bothers me that the, that the DDA is not keeping their plan current. And I find it odd that Jay mentioned that the road commission, that they contributed, the DDA contributed $500,000 to the road commission. And it was based on the fact that they were returning or using money that was captured from the county's road millage. And I'm not exactly sure what he meant by that, but it struck a note with me in saying, we're asking the same thing. We're asking to return money from the millage that's captured. And it's like, whoa, whoa, we can't do that. But it was very easy to give the money to the road commission, but not for, not to give the money to us. So I'm, you know, I find that out of balance there. And again, as I said, the ordinance 1482 says that the money has to be returned. It can't be saved. And I know Rob Pattinson had a real good idea about saving money to create the fire station in, the fire station number three, which we're going to need in 10 or 12 years. And in 10 or 12 years, we could probably save a few million dollars. But not with this ordinance. This ordinance doesn't allow us to save the tax money that we collect. We have to figure out another way to save the money. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, but we can't do it with this ordinance. The way I read it, I bow to our township attorney to tell us, tell me otherwise. But the way I read it, we can't set money aside from year to year. We have to return it. So that's all.
Trustee Noel, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Treasurer Yable, anything?
I don't know at this time.
Okay, well, regarding goals, so roads, Jackson Road, and water and sewer. Hopefully you can, loud enough? Am I, oh, sorry. Yeah, so I believe this is premature. It's short-sighted. And yes, I have said to the DDA that we need to start having regular meetings once a month. We have a lot to go through. We have an old plan that needs to be revised and gone through. We haven't had the chance to do that. We've only been together since, well, November 20th. Okay. So the goals were originally, the plan was for water and sewer. We needed it for many reasons, and Jackson Road Boulevard. To widen that, to expand it and whatnot. We still have those goals. We have our REUs that we need to expand. And we have a water loop that we need to, we have a lot going on in water and sewer. So the DDA could incorporate these goals into their new plan. But we don't have time to create all of this because this is on the chopping block. And Jackson Road Boulevard, yeah, I think we have, I can think of at least two developments, oh, sorry, down Jackson Road, past Baker, that I can't remember the proposal, how many units, but there's going to be a lot of traffic, more development down there. And we have August 19th, the Jackson Road corridor. For us, the three entities to sit down and talk about that and create a plan for safety, for multi-modal transportation. Well, thank you for doing that. Yeah, so there, we do have opportunities here which could still fit into this original plan, the goals. But I don't believe that we've had enough time for the DDA as, as an entity, as a group, to sit down and really go into things and get down to brass tacks. And I would love, as a trustee before, going to the DDA meetings for the roads advisory and whatnot. But I had said to some of the DDA members that we need to start working better with other entities, especially the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission, a lot of their, the proposals that come to them and other ideas, ordinances and whatnot, needs the DDA because you overlap. The districts overlap. So I am, I'm not in support of dissolving the DDA. I think that we can work together to come up with a plan and to revamp it. And, and just, I would love to see this township work together. Collaboratively, come to an agreement and actually create something instead of just chopping blocks. I'm finished here.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
In terms of the purpose versus the plan, when I look at the ordinance that our attorney drafted for us, and I want to know, it should be 2025-08 if it were to be considered. Because this has been, and I think until recently, I had conflated the two, the plan versus the purpose. And we are talking about multiple things. I've heard multiple ideas, like a plan could be amended, and certainly the plans out of date. I think everybody's acknowledged a new plan, you know, is needed, and there's money budgeted for that. Do I think a plan could include land for a third fire station on the west side of the township? No. Do I think it could include any of the things Jan mentioned? No. Because I believe we are bound by the purpose. And if you look at the ordinance here, Jillian, and there's... I know Mariah's, you know, talked, talked us through this before, but that this first purpose of the DDA is stated in Article 14-2, Section 1419 in this alliance with statute. And there are these findings of what the 1988 Township Board finds was the status of things. Those five findings there. And then subsection B, the determination of the board to halt the deterioration in the downtown district, property value deterioration. And so the question before us is in number two there. What is our determination? Has the DDA completed its purpose for which it was created? And as I read it, that purpose is in A 1 through 5 there.
Well, we still have Jackson Road that needs to potentially be expanded. We still have water that is contaminated. There's a PFAS issue down Dino Drive. I mean, there's expansion of our REUs. How are we going to begin negotiations and pay for those REUs? When we want dense development along Jackson Road, and we have how many that are in the works right now?
Where would that be authorized under these five? I mean, it's a sincere question. I don't see the authority for that.
2006.
Plan.
Everybody's looking at 88.
There was an extension of 2006.
No, yeah, I'm not looking at the plan. I'm not looking at the plan.
We're looking at the ordinance. Article 14-2, Section 14-19.
Yeah, in the packet. Yeah, the plan was for sure. Mariah, do you want to talk to the difference? Because again, we keep talking about purpose and plan, and we're talking over each other.
So there are two different sections of the ordinance. The first section is about the purpose of the DDA. And then there's another section, I think it's 14, Roman numeral 2-3, that's about the TIF. Two, two different things. Some municipalities have those in completely separate ordinances. So what I think you're talking about is amendments to the TIF plan, which is different than amending the purpose of the DDA. And what the ordinance says and what the statute says is when the purpose of the DDA is complete, then, then the DDA can be terminated or dissolved. So the, two separate things.
The 2006 amendment went through all of the Citizens Council, right? It was voted on and approved by the Board of Trustees.
TIF plan, 2006 amendment to the TIF plan.
6th document, it says the purpose of this development plan and tax increment financing plan is to provide for the acquisition, construction, and financing of the necessary street sidewalks, streets, great parking, improvements in other facilities needed in the downtown district to achieve the objectives of the authority and to prevent further deterioration.
You're proving my point, Ryan. You're proving my point. That is the TIF plan. That's the purpose of the TIF plan, not the purpose of the Downtown Development Authority itself. Two separate purposes.
Yeah, and, okay, so number five.
That's how we work.
But, but I can, if, if there's extra copies, and this is what has been circulated a couple of times, but it, but it's in our Code of Ordinances. You can either look it up in the packet, or you can look at our current Code of Ordinances, which is also online. But it's the purpose of the DDA. And, and there's a paper packet there, too. Alex, if you'd be so kind to grab that. So for people who don't, yes, thank you so much. Yes, there's a paper packet everybody can look at. And three, again, this is the same document that we had published on July 22nd. So. Okay. It's the ordinance that authorizes the DDA.
Resolution of water supply problem and traffic congestion, congestion will permit property development in the downtown district. Well, we have a water supply or a sewer supply problem. We have our use that we have, we're running out. It's going to happen faster than what we predict or what we think. And we will need to negotiate that. And if we want to continue with the plan of having more residential in the water and sewer district, we're going to have to do something about the REU. So we have a supply problem. We have traffic issues. And in order for us to bring more people into this township, well, I think there's, pretty soon, we're going to have more people using the bus system because we're not going to be able to afford cars and insurance and whatnot. Anyways, but, you know, having the... I, I still feel, or based on this, that we still have a purpose. The DDA still has a purpose.
And it's based on the property values of the, of the properties located within the downtown district having declined. The purpose is to halt the property value deterioration in the downtown district, eliminate the causes of deterioration, increase property tax. We all know this.
Yeah, and we still have a lot of room there because I can think of some vacant areas that have been vacant for a long time that are overgrown, that if we had some type of, well, Spark is a good example, they could help us attract more business, new business, or even whatever we need. I don't know. I can think of one parcel that's by, what's her, a printer? You know, the printer, Printec.
Printec.
Yeah, that's one example. There's others. The Pizza Hut area is another, while there's supposed to be a proposal for that. But anyways, I still see that we have purpose through this ordinance.
So you would still find it to be true?
Yes. And... Let's wait for Treasurer Yable to come back.
Does anybody else have any other questions? That was just the, there are 10 points in this ordinance. That was point one.
Well, this is the 10 points, so we were just looking at the ordinance itself, the purpose.
So this, this is the ordinance, the, the second meeting, we've looked at this ordinance, that...
Number one, could I show you?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I mean, that, that number one.
Yeah. But you said there's 10 more points, but you weren't referring to this.
This is number one.
Which just restates what's in our current ordinance. And then points two through 10.
It's on the next page, but it's not part of the ordinance. It's about...
It's in the ordinance. Yes, it's the second page of the ordinance.
The second page of the ordinance says the Township Board has determined that the DDA has completed its purpose for which it is, was created.
Yeah, this is a...
Wait, what page are you on?
Right there. So this is a proposed ordinance that would modify our current Code of Ordinances. And it's two pages. I'm sorry, it's three pages.
Right, but this is to repeal the DDA. But we were talking about the purpose of the DDA.
Yes.
Okay.
The, the purpose of the DDA is stated under number one here.
Okay. Treasurer Yable, we were kind of waiting for you.
Oh, okay. I, I would just say I respect everybody's opinions here. I disagree, and that's one of the best purposes about democracy. I'd be ready to vote, but y'all want to discuss more?
Okay. Well, I'm, anybody else, more discussion?
I just want to confirm, Treasurer Yable talked about this earlier about, you know, specifically the commercial paper, the grant, the contracts. All of that is set forth here
Yep.
by statute. So I just want to dispel any notion, I know there's been suggestions that the township has a funding problem, that, that this would fill. That, that is not it. The fund stays segregated in its own fund. The custody of the monies would go from the DDA treasurer to the township treasurer.
Treasurer Yable, did you want to?
Well, I propose a motion that this is table, at least until after the August 19th. table at least until after the August nineteenth joint meeting. Is there support?
I'm not sure what it'll change, unfortunately.
Well, I would like to see the three entities work together and continue the purpose of the DDA. Oh, you missed the conversation.
Mm-hmm.
I, I said that the, I still see the purpose because we still have Jackson Road that needs development. We, expansion, we have water and sewer. We still have needs, REUs to, you know, the more dense development along Jackson, Jackson Road. And we need, that was the goals of the township, and I've heard that over and over again. REUs keep coming up over and over again, and we still don't have a plan on what we're going to do about it. So now we could have a plan, and it fits into the goals and the plan, the purpose of the DDA.
I, I, I would second it, but I, I don't think we're going to have the support, but I'll second it for, for the role. Why not?
Um, I guess roll, roll call. So there's motion by Carrie.
Yeah, motion by Carrie, support by Yable to table and three until after August nineteenth at least.
Roll call vote, please.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yable?
Yes.
Flintoft? No. Brant?
No.
Noel?
No.
Reed?
No.
Motion fails, two to four. I would make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five oh eight as presented with the correction of the Scribner's error of oh six to oh eight.
I'll support that motion.
Do you, you have a question about that? Oh, you were just.
It's as presented here tonight, as well as how it was presented for discussion on July twenty-second.
Well, roll call vote, please.
Carrie?
No.
Yable?
No.
Flintoft? Yes. Brant?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, four to two.
Okay. Well, moving on to, well, it is ten fifteen, and we, in our rules of order, a member can request. What the hell's the name of the, or the?
There can be a motion.
Good night. Where is it? Yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, two solid waste.
Yeah, payment of bills.
Payment of bills. Uh, well, we've already had that. No, we must, the, yeah, waive an ATA and then the lobbyist.
I would make a motion to finish our agenda as adopted.
Support.
I would like to have shorter agendas from now on, so we're not here until midnight. Yeah, it's a good idea.
Five-minute break?
Um, okay, is, it's ten fourteen, is there a motion to take a break?
Motion to take a break till ten nineteen?
Um, how about ten, ten twenty?
Ten twenty.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I just want to note for the record, the prior motion to continue the meeting, there was not a vote, and that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's bring this meeting back to order, please, at, uh,
Ten twenty-four.
Ten twenty-four. Okay.
N four.
All right, we are on to N four at ten twenty-four, is that what you said, David?
Mm-hmm.
Solid waste Ann Arbor Township model for preferred hauler. So when I attended the sheriff quarterly meetings with the other supervisors and mayors that have contracts with the, with the sheriff, anyways, afterwards, I had a conversation with Diane O'Connell, I think that's her last name. Yeah, about just various township stuff. You know, they are a charter township, but they're smaller. They, they have like six thousand residents. Anyways, she, we were talking about committees and whatnot, and then I asked her about trash. Do you have a trash committee? And she says, no, no, we have, we've implemented a preferred hauler program. Well, it was years ago. I don't, she didn't give me the, I don't remember off the top of my head. I may have put it in here. But anyways, I did reach out to get more information. I ended up talking with Township Treasurer Carleen Colvin Garcia, whom we have met a few times at Warma and whatnot. I have heard, her notes as I was discussing.
Thank you.
And then I sent them over to her to make sure that I had correct information, and she did. And then I had some questions for, oh, oh, here, just keep going. Wait, I'm going to do that. And there's one for trustee Ryzer and maybe the public if they want. Anyways, the conversation was that they have a preferred hauler. So they, the township did go out for bid, and they negotiated a good rate at the time. I believe it was Republic back in the day, but they no longer have Republic. It is now Waste Management. But anyways, the decision was to have a preferred hauler that was based on rural and high-density populations and to allow residents to choose their own if not happy with the preferred hauler. At least one HOA contracts with their own company, and many other HOAs use a preferred hauler. And the point of all of this was to, to negotiate great rates for residents, customers to want to contract, or yeah, contract with the preferred hauler, but also have it where there was freedom that if HOA wanted to contract on their own, but also if a resident wasn't happy with the Waste Management, that they could have the opportunity to go with another company. So their preferred hauler began with Waste Manage, well, it's not Waste Management anymore, it's WM, which is short for Waste Management, but that's a whole other story. Beginning twenty twenty-two, ending in twenty twenty-seven, they do direct billing, so between the company and the customer. And then when residents call in a complaint, they are given to customer service contact at Waste Management. The township does not usually intercede unless they have multiple calls for the same type of issue. So they, Carleen had said that their latest complaints were about Republic bins not being picked up because the preferred hauler is Waste Management, but they got that situated. And I said, so how many complaints do you get per day? And she looked it up in the log, which their log, every, anybody in the township hall, if somebody called, they could just pull it up. They haven't had a complaint since November of twenty twenty-four.
Pretty good.
Yeah. I was like, oh my God, that is amazing. And that, and I said, and it was because of the mixed, missed pickups because of the Republic bins. So the trash and recycling are included in their contract. Bulky items, customers must contact on Waste Management or WM to have it pick up, picked up. And according, from what I did research, that that is an extra charge. But, you know, every municipality is different as far as what they can negotiate with their contractor. They only have one service day for the whole township, which is Mondays. But again, their township isn't as big as ours. And I believe she said, I can't remember how many parcels they have, but it's like twenty seventeen hundred or something like that. That's not their population, just the parcels. And this does not apply to apartment complexes, businesses, of course, because apartment complex is considered a business. They did negotiate their contract based on the number of customers and density of the areas. I guess, I mean, we have more dense areas, so that wouldn't be a problem. So then I had some questions because Clerk Flintoft, in our attorney meeting, when I brought, this was like shortly after I had talked with Diane, that you pulled up their ordinance, and one of the things said that if, in there, that if a resident wanted to go with a different company, that they would have to apply for a permit with the clerk. So when I brought that up to Carleen, she said, oh, that's in our ordinance? We don't do that. So now they're looking at their ordinance and going through and, you know, and, and they just don't have a need to do that because I was concerned about extra work for our clerk if that was something that we would adopt, but they don't do that. I did ask for a copy of their WM and contract, and she's, as you can see, she's going to send that over later on. And how many residents and, or slash parcels signed up with Waste Management to this day? So I wanted to know how many that are with them and how many, well, I guess she wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to know who is with the other company, except they do know at least one of their, their HOAs is with a different company. She didn't say who that was, but that's their prerogative. So anyways, you know, we have been tossing things back and forth, just ideas of do we repeal, do we keep, do we, you know? And when Diane was sharing this with me, this seemed like it would be a fit for SIO or something that's closer to what everybody has been talking about. So. Um, wait a minute.
Where?
Who? This way?
Couple of easy questions.
Let's start down at the end, and then we'll go this way.
Um, some of this sounds close to what we're doing, some of it, not all, but some of it. And Waste Management provided service to my neighborhood before we were required to switch to the current one, the priority. Or GFL in the priority, but I was very satisfied with them. My whole name was. With Waste Management.
Okay.
They provided service to the neighborhood before contracts with GFL. There are going to be some problems with everybody, but they're minor. They were minor.
The same with Black Alpine. They had Waste Management. They really loved them. Oh, did you have more?
No.
Okay, I'll see Reed.
The Ann Arbor Township. Um, in your discussion with Ann Arbor Township, they said their last complaint was in November of twenty twenty-four. Was that the complaints that were phoned to the township, or was that the complaints that were filed directly with Waste Management?
No, those came to the township because of the, it was because of the, the Republic bins not being picked up, and then, yeah, so then they.
But my, no, my question is, it sounds like they've had perfect service since November of twenty twenty-four. But my ask, I'm asking is, do we know how many residents called Waste Management directly with complaint?
No, but they do create, they do provide a log.
And, and that log says that they haven't had a complaint since November twenty twenty-four? Or is that not the log they were looking at?
They, well, they have their internal log, but Waste Management provides them their complaint list. And I did not get a copy of that. I could ask her for that.
And I think you already asked them, because I'd like to know how many, how many garbage, trash haulers they have working in Ann Arbor Township right now. You know, they, they have Waste Management, but individuals are free, I gather, to contract with anyone they choose.
Yes.
So we could have a situation where one person on the block chooses XYZ company, and so one truck comes down that street once a week. You know, that's, see, that's, that's the thing I'm concerned about, is if we open this up, you could have three trucks coming down the same street on the same day, three different companies coming down the street in the same day. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, and that could be, however, that's the HOAs. They, they don't allow other trucks, like they, because they, they either go with the preferred hauler, they have it in their bylaws. According to what Carla, Carleen had said, they have in their bylaws that they have to have one provider within that HOA. But there's only at least one that is with a different hauler, but for the whole, for the whole HOA.
Not all HOA bylaws have that.
Correct. But in their township, that's what she was referring to. We don't have that. David, so you, you want to know how many other haulers?
And it would be interesting to know how many other haulers and how many, of course, she probably doesn't know this, how many clients each one of those haulers have?
Yeah.
Because if they have, would you say seventeen hundred parcels?
Yeah, and, but it seems that the residents are really happy with this preferred hauler because the township has negotiated a really good.
Okay.
And they're happy with the service. So that, that's where the board would have to, you know, really work on that and create something that our residents would want to belong, you know, to contract, contract with.
Was your contact there free to give you what the negotiated price was?
Oh, it's in here. It's in the, um.
Oh, I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I included in the agenda item, the, oh, it's on the second page. Yeah, Ann Arbor Township, well, I did include their ordinance, and then also their.
The price is in the ordinance?
No, no, no. It's in the, uh, it's their apply, your collection service for Ann Arbor Township, this is right on their website. But this is what they hadn't negotiated for their, their township, so.
I don't see any prices on, you know, has the price for bulk pickup?
Yeah, just for bulk.
Hmm.
Does not have, hopefully our quarterly or annual price, all the way at the top, right-hand side.
Oh, bulk items.
Yeah, I don't see any other.
It wasn't. I remember seeing it. I thought it was in here. That's why I copied it or printed it off. But I'm assuming whatever the price is, is based, well, yeah, it's based on the density and then the number of residents that they had speculated would. And we have more residents, obviously. And I'm assuming that that's what lowers the price, well, part of, one of the reasons. Isn't it on their website? Oh, I'm sorry, you shut it down already?
No, no, I didn't see it on the website either.
All right, well, I just was curious.
Okay.
Because we're paying.
Seventy-five seventy-five per quarter.
Yep.
Well, we're supposed to. Some people have reported ninety-six and other.
Yeah, I think because I'm senior, I'm paying seventy-two or seventy or something like that. I don't know. I get that.
Clerk Flintoft, did you raise your hand, or was it?
Um, thanks, Jillian, for bringing this. I wanted, I had some questions and comments about the ordinance. Their ordinance, you know, kind of, you know, I think there's some, this model really regulates the homeowners instead of regulating the company. And, you know, with our early drafts in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, this board was presented with some proposed ordinances that would place these requirements on our residents. And when we had a room full of a hundred people here, you know, a lot of the complaints were from the homeowner saying, we don't want to be regulated. We don't want to be. And, and so one, which I think was an improvement, was the board moved toward an ordinance that required a was the board moved toward an ordinance that required a license with a provider and then all of those regulations applied to the provider. So it sounds to me, Jillian, like with the question about exemption, I'm wondering out loud here, and I'm not criticizing Ann Arbor Township, I don't think they, you know, I think they're probably doing a great job. But I would guess that they don't enforce these rules against their residents if and when they're not being followed.
Well, because what?
So for example, page two, regulations for implementing the article, all of the matters of regulations, acceptable materials and things, I would imagine some of that might be contained in the contract with WM.
Which
And it shall be unlawful to violate any rules or regulations promulgated. And fifty-four thirty-four requires, and I'm not complaining, I'm just saying this would be a radical departure from, in this way only. Because we would be holding our residents responsible and regulating our residents' behavior instead of regulating the company, saying which companies are allowed to work in SIO Township, which is kind of what our ordinance now says.
Yeah, well, but we are regulating our residents when we force them only into one.
But we, we don't force them to use garbage service, Ann Arbor Township does.
I don't think so.
Fifty-four thirty-four. The owner or occupant of a residential, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying this is very different in that way. The owner occupant of a residential unit shall dispose of refuse only by one or more of the following options. And, you know, several people in SIO, at least at the time, five years ago, said, hey, I take care of my own
Oh.
trash.
Yeah, but here it says transporting and disposing of refuse in an approved refuse disposal area, provided that the refuse transported is tightly covered and secured so that no part of the load is lost. So they are able to take their refuse somewhere.
Okay, to an approved, so if they share with a neighbor, they take it to their work, whatever it is.
Yeah, or the recycling place down by stivers or, you know.
And then the fees, this says that the fees, fifty-four thirty-seven, shall be payable to the township, or it's designate. And so I'm assuming that the contract designates WM to receive the fees, but it looks like the township has the power to collect them directly?
Well, she's, she, the customer pays waste management there, it's called well, that's what she told me and it's in here in the notes.
And it, it looks to me just on its face that the ordinance would allow either.
Yeah, the township board is designated, so the township is designated WM, is there?
Potentially.
Right.
Or whatever, yeah, company or whatever. But, you know, I'm not suggesting that we adopt their ordinance. I'm suggesting that we have something that is close to what we have been discussing with all the different ideas and allowing more freedom for our residents, because
Absolutely, I'm just pointing out some questions and areas.
I guess I would ask a couple of questions. One, I was able to find out on the Ann Arbor Township website, it took me a minute.
Oh.
Quarterly costs for five-one twenty-five through four-thirty twenty-six is eighty-seven seventy-two.
Okay.
Uh, my, correct, for this, I guess, sure.
Twenty-two, right?
Seventy-two. Uh, it increases to ninety-one twenty-four next year on May the first.
And remember, they have less residents, so.
I understand that. And I appreciate you bringing this item, I guess I'd ask a couple of questions. We still haven't given priority waste an answer.
Well, right, because the board hasn't figured out what we want to do.
Okay. One of, I'm looking at the model motion here and one of the, sorry, it's loading. One of the steps of the model motion is to approve moving forward with the preferred hauler, solid waste collection model, to revise chapter twenty-six of the solid waste ordinance accordingly and to initiate the development issuance of an RFP for solid waste hauling services. I understand that, but I guess my question would be, it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like the preference would be to have WM or waste management, but
We would have to go out for bid.
And we may, just to also put on the record, we may and or likely will get a bid for priority.
Probably.
I would, I would imagine, but I'm not forcing them.
Stevens and what else, LRS is another one, which used to be modern.
But I will also say that on its face, I don't know what we would get, but Ann Arbor Township's rate is twelve dollars more a quarter than people are paying now.
Right, and they're also what, fifteen thousand residents? The population, less than we have. I think they have around six thousand or something. But, yeah. Anyway, here's an idea and and of course, you know, this would be in steps, we wouldn't be able to go out for RP if we haven't figured out or haven't revised the ordinance or decided on, you know, the plan that we want.
Real quick question, isn't, don't we have a preferred hauler model?
No.
We don't?
No, we have, we have a company that is the only company that our residents, they either contract with them or they don't have a contract at all, there's no in-between.
Well, but we can contract with more than one.
And then, then we're gonna, sure, and we would be back in the same situation with poor service if and that's, you know, and we, if you were on the campaign trail and you talked with residents, their number one gripe was garbage.
HOAs can have their own.
No, they can't.
No, not, not under our ordinance.
Okay, all right, that was a grandfathered, the requirements were grandfathered in until the contracts expired.
Correct, and they've all expired. I would say too, with this paradigm of putting the requirement, and I'm not opposed to it, I just think there's a lot of considerations. If we put the requirement on the homeowner and we're back to the definition, I do appreciate they got away with just stating residential unit without defining it and we had those belabored conversations of what's a residential unit. And we would have to think about, you know, how it interplays with our code enforcement, because we have funded a code enforcement officer. We, you know, he does a very good job, it is complaint-based. So if we put that requirement on a resident and then we get a code enforcement complaint from one resident about another resident, that they're not complying with the regulations, they're, you know, leaving their cans down by the road or not bringing them in within twenty-four hours or anything in violation of this, I would be, it's something to consider. If that's actually, I just think that there's, there are some implications of putting the onus on the the requirements on our residents that we would then be obligated to enforce, whatever those requirements are, versus requirements on a company, which we are also obligated to enforce. Harder to do, but certainly seems more equitable to enforce rules on a company than on our residents.
Well, we already have that regarding nuisance and garbage and whatnot. So our code enforcement would be involved in that. And as far as, you know, twenty-four hours, you know, like if you have your carts out for longer than twenty-four hours, well, they're sitting out there now being, waiting to be picked up from priority waste in some areas. But
Yeah. Oh, and they are, for sure.
Yeah, wasn't Laurel, isn't that what she said? Her cart's still out there waiting to be picked up? Okay.
I guess a couple other questions.
Okay.
Who do you propose is part of the development issuance of the RFP?
I'm sorry?
Who do you propose would be involved in the development and issuance of the RFP?
The development, well, that's, this is going to be many steps. I mean, we did have a committee before and I would like to see if we do have a committee have new members, different members to help with that process. Mm-hmm. Yeah, exactly.
The trash game.
Right. The least honorific title you gave yourselves.
Would it be appropriate, excuse me, would it be appropriate just to take the previous RFP?
No, that's really outdated, I would think.
Well, we can change the stage, but yeah, I understand. Well, we're looking for the same thing though, right? Trash, recycle and compost, or not compost?
Yes.
Or, yeah, compost.
It's a law for it.
We would have to look at the, I guess, review the RFP from back then, it's been five, six years.
And if anybody does green compost, that would be wonderful.
Oh, what was that?
Green kitchens, you know.
Oh, I don't think they
I don't know if anybody around here does. They do it in major cities.
So in terms of so, so this ordinance too, that Ann Arbor has, allows for one preferred company. Our current ordinance allows for as many as we contract with. So what are the pros and cons of those in terms of fostering competition, trying to keep prices competitive?
Yeah, but this is the, the point is having a preferred hauler. So if we went out for bid and we negotiated a great contract and that attracted our residents to that preferred hauler, most would stay with it, stick with it. And if they're not happy, then they're allowed to go with another company because that creates a competition and that preferred hauler hopefully would, well, I know there's other company, if my, if that customer doesn't like us, they're going to be searching for somebody else.
I mean, I'm supportive of looking at some modifications to our, our ordinance along these lines, Jillian. I would want to think about I, I need a better understanding of how that affects our relationship with priority waste and the current contract that we, we have. But what I don't want to be careful of is not have any unintended, unforeseen consequences of, you know, having the price spike up for all of our residents.
If I may, I'm wondering if we're having this conversation in reverse. Shouldn't we decide what to do about priority first before we talk about other cities?
I would agree.
Possibly, but we, it was suggested that we look at what the township wants to, for our trash or, or, you know, just trash in general, do we want to have, be in the trash business or not? There's all these questions. So Attorney Fink, one or both of them, had suggested, what was that thing that he, Jim created? Decision table?
Decision table.
Yeah. It did, yeah. Yeah, and the first thing he said was, the township board needs to figure out, do they want to be in the trash business or not? And then that opened up all kinds of other.
I, I know and I, I appreciate how lengthy that discussion was that evening. That was meant to be a five to ten minute discussion to answer the question, are we in, are we out? And we still don't really have an answer, so I'm trying to come to some consensus here.
Right, and that's why when this was shared with me, I thought, hey, let's, here's another idea, let's present it to the board and maybe it'll spark something for us to trustee, you know?
Have we done everything that we are obligated to do with priority? In terms of if we think we're going to change or open up, do we have to give them notice?
Not one hundred percent sure that I'm understanding the question, but the, there does not appear to be a notice requirement if you're going to be amending your ordinance to basically get out of the trash hauling business, which is one of the ways that you would manage that contract. Is that what you're asking?
I was concerned because I know Tom Off has raised issues about we need to respond one way or the other to priority by a certain date. I don't remember what the date is, but it's approaching, it's in the fall.
So remember that you do not have a single trash hauler ordinance. You've been treating it that way, but you can, you can have another hauler or a hundred other haulers under your current ordinance and you don't have to get permission from priority to do that.
Yeah, and there was an idea before to contract with another company and then give, you know, then if residents weren't happy with priority, then they would go with the other company and that would, either priority would do better or they would dissolve because they just didn't have the customers. But, I mean, it's just another idea. But I know that our residents are not happy. Trustee Reed.
If I may, Maria, you just said, and it has been stated before, that the township is in the trash collection business and I think it's because the contract with priority is with the township.
Your ordinance requires anyone who's going to haul waste in the township to have a contract with the township.
Even though the bills go directly to the customer?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
We only regulate the company, David.
So in this model, in this, in the Ann Arbor model, the contract is between the client, between the homeowner and the garbage company.
Yes, but, but they have gone out for bid to have a preferred hauler and they negotiated the price and all the details.
Or if the resident wants XYZ trash company, the trash company has to get permission from the township to do that, correct?
For president.
The resident.
Well, in the ordinance, but when Carlene said, no, they don't do that.
They being the resident or they being the township?
Well, so in the ordinance, it states that if a resident wants to go with another company, they have to submit or request a permit from the clerk in order to do so, but they don't uphold that.
It's, it sounds in some ways, although not exactly the same, similar to the fact that SIO for a very long time didn't enforce the DDA ordinance.
Right.
And this is just an ordinance that's on the books that nobody's, it's like a law that says you can't jaywalk across the street. It might not ever be enforced, but it's still a law.
Yeah, and
The wild, wild west, basically, if the resident wants XYZ, they just call them up and say, come.
It sounds like people are largely complying and happy, I mean, which is good. I just, I think we don't want to replicate having an ordinance that we don't have the stomach to enforce. That's my point. This regulates residents, if we're going to regulate residents, we're going to enforce those regulations.
But we do regulate residents through our BLYT ordinance and through other
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm not prepared, I, I would be hard pressed, I would have to be persuaded to, you know, have a code violation for somebody who leaves their cans down, you know, or whatever it is. And this, this ordinance gives fraud discretion for those rules to be promulgated by, by resolution.
I, I do not want us to be the city of Ann Arbor where if you leave your trash cans out too long, you receive a substantial ticket.
And we don't have to have that in our ordinance.
We could strike that part.
Yeah. I mean, that's, and this is just, I'm not, and I never suggested to adopt this ordinance.
Just a model.
Yes, it's just a model. It's another idea.
And Jillian, on the contract management side, because that's really been our challenge is, you know, you know, despite a lot of people's good efforts, the township has not been able to effectively manage the contract with priority waste in a way to get the level of service that we need.
GFL.
Or GFL. So we haven't, and we don't have control of the service. Um, and to, this is kinda going to the next agenda item, to the question about, should we bill, you know, handle billing internally? I'm certainly open to that idea. What is still problematic to me is we bill internally, but we don't have control of the service because we don't have, we're not effective in managing a a major contract with a giant hauler. I I would be, I think that handling the billing internally invites more calls to the township.
Mm hmm.
Or. Uh, I know, Jillian, I'm sorry, I'm I'm just kinda touching on a, yeah, it was kinda, I guess it's kind of in the next next item, but it just, that's one aspect, and their ordinance allows for either the township to bill or the contract or the contractor to bill. I think what continues to be challenging, whether we have this ordinance, our ordinance, Priority Waste or WM, is the real question I have is how can we? I don't know if this, our township can, or any township can, really effectively manage the service with these big companies. So I'm I'm wondering who does it well?
Well.
Sounds like Ann Arbor has done it well.
Yeah, if they, their last complaint was in November.
Do they meet with them like every two weeks, or how do they do it?
I will ask.
Wonder how Ipsy Town, how well or will or will not, I guess, Ipsy Township does? Cause they also have a contract with WM and a dedicated millage for trash.
Right, they just renewed their millage.
Yep.
Yeah, they, so Ipsy Township just renewed their millage for trash service?
It's substantial, it's two mills.
Yeah, two mills for trash service, and they contract with whom? Do you remember, Ryan?
Bully Waste Management.
Yeah, I think WM.
That's Ipsy Township?
Yep.
Yep.
Or Ipsy City.
Ipsy Township.
Yeah.
Ipsy City has a as a millage, and so does Ann Arbor City as a millage.
The taxable value is so low in Ipsy Township, so.
I thought it was the city where the taxable.
Uh, both.
Both?
Both.
Okay.
Well, I have some more questions to ask um Carleen. She's been very generous with her time.
Yeah, please, please confirm with Carleen about the about the complaints.
Uh, oh, you mean the complaint log, the waste management? Do they provide them?
Yes, and if they, if the waste manager provides their their complaints that come direct to them, how many have they gotten? Cause I believe that perhaps the township hasn't gotten any complaints because the customers are calling Waste Management directly.
Well, yeah, and they they set it up that way, but if there's an issue, well, you know, residents will always call the township if there's a ongoing issue, so whatever this republic bin issue was, that was their biggest issue back in November. Okay, and um and potentially, how many oth- other haulers are in there servicing their township?
Right.
Um, and Jess, you had a question of, oh, um.
How they manage the contract effectively?
That was it, um.
Like how they improve service when there are issues? Because we've we've had um trouble compelling ongoing improvements.
Was that how how they managed their contract?
Managed, yeah.
Especially.
Mm hmm.
Yes. Yeah, it seemed like it was pretty low key. And you know, when people aren't complaining, they're happy. We're ignorant. One of the other. Okay. Alright, so um, I'll get these answers, question, the questions answered, and bring that back to the next meeting, or I can just email them to everybody and we can go from there?
Yeah, we could, we could move this, you know, the follow up at the next meeting under unfinished business.
Okay. Christie will make a, um, yep, I knew you were on it. Okay. So, do we need a motion for that?
Continue?
It's, no.
Well, just to.
Continue it.
Just to continue it for next meeting, after I get some questions answered. Okay, so let's um just move on to N five. Syle Township Syle Waste, next steps.
Sure, um, so I copied our last meeting item. I added a summary of the questions. Certainly, there's other questions that come up that people wanna add. I'm happy to add them. Um, my recommendation would be for myself, Clerk Flintoff, and Attorney Fink, wow, it's eleven o'clock, uh, to meet with representatives from Priority Waste to gather information and address questions raised by the Syle Township Board of Trustees. Purpose of the meeting is to obtain additional details necessary to inform further board discussion or future board discussion and potential action. Certainly could be for uh action on the item brought by Supervisor Carrier or anything else the board wants to discuss.
Could we um also include Christie on the, in this?
Sure.
And the reason why is Christie and I had sat down with Priority Waste twice or once or something like that. Went once, okay, but we've had many um many conversations about priority waste.
I.
Would that be?
Uh, I would ask to, if you can, get the re- data on composting as well.
Okay. Add back to this.
When is the last time township representatives have met with Priority Waste?
Christie, when do we meet with them?
Physically met.
Yeah.
Now what? Have you done anything else?
No, just um e- emails to Sam and Sam.
Okay.
Um. I don't think I've had any phone calls with them, but.
And Ryan, uh, just a question for understanding. You said the purpose of the meeting is to obtain additional details necessary to form future discussion and action. Um, what, specifically what questions do you think we should ask related to the contract?
Um, I would defer to our attorney, but I suppose, you know, one question is asking for uh formal confirmation that they want to extend the contract. I think Sam certainly came to a meeting and asked, is that formal request? I don't necessarily think so. I mean, it is a request. It's not a written request. Is that addressed to Township Hall and sent to the attention of either the supervisor or the clerk, so I don't think it's a formal legal request.
I didn't receive anything.
So.
Who, did anybody receive anything?
There was there's an email a while, a long time ago, um, I think, I'll look for it.
I also don't necessarily consider an email a formal request.
Nope.
Yeah.
Well, it might be depending on what the email is.
I'll look for that email. And yeah, I just.
I I do think we need to figure out one way or another what what we're gonna do with priority. Whether they're going to be renewed, whether we're going to go in a different direction. And this would just let us get more information, answer some of the questions that people had the last time we discussed this.
Right, and Theo did note that we have one of the cheap, cheaper contracts um in the county.
Mm hmm.
Um.
Actually, that's not what Waste Management told me.
I disagree with another contractor.
Yeah.
Trying to interpret people's pricing.
I'll move the motion.
I'd support.
Oh, with the amendment?
With the amendment of Officer Coordinator, he can also be added to the group.
I'm moving about motion with the au- with the amendment to include Office Coordinator.
I have it support.
Oh, okay. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition, so pa- uh motion passes six zero.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Hey, Wave and AAA.
Uh, payment of the bills?
Thank you for doing.
Well, thank you.
Actually, next is O three, Ryan, your item.
So I I'm gonna give a very high level uh overview of this at this point, and I I would say most of the questions would be better answered next time. Uh, because Marie Grass, the Executive Director of Wave, and Ken Anderson and Forrest Young, I believe, uh, from AAATA Airplane to come to the board meeting on August twenty sixth. I'd ask if possible if they can be, you know, similar to what we did tonight with our MERS representative be somewhat earlier in the meeting. And just ask for that, I said, I can see what I can do. Um, we did receive a purchase of service agreement. It was emailed, if not to the whole board, it was certainly emailed to uh the supervisor, the clerk, and myself, uh in addition to our finance manager, uh, a handful of other contacts in the township. AAATA costs are going up nine percent year over year. Uh, Wave costs are going up sixty nine percent year over year. Uh, some of this has to do with uh the state budget, which I don't know if anyone here has been following that, but the state, at least last I heard, still doesn't have a budget. Um, doesn't have a budget for the school, doesn't have a budget for the general fund. And so there's assumptions being made on what exactly transit service is gonna get, although this builds in a cut to transit service of approximately, I believe, between three and six percent.
They have the same fiscal year as us?
No, no, that's part of the problem.
There's, the state is October first.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, so this agreement would begin on October first and end on September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. So October first, twenty twenty five, September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. I attached and certainly encourage people to review. We don't have to go through it in detail tonight, but the request um from Wave last year for a hundred thousand dollars, which is another thing to consider in this whole part. There's a memo from uh Marie to the board uh based off some questions I pre- preliminarily asked her directly. Uh, she provided a a wealth of data, I appreciated that. Uh, there's a copy of the purchase of service agreement for both this year and last year, as well as a public transit fund forecast. I'd remind everybody at the table that the transit fund um is projected to go into uh a deficit. It it's going to depend upon what this board decides to do as far as whether we adopt the agreement as presented from Wave and AAATA or whether we try to modify it in some way, shape, or form to um i- influence uh cost savings uh by by a change in service. But if we don't do anything, this puts us into a deficit likely to either fiscally or twenty seven or fis- I believe it was fiscally or twenty seven when Clerk Flintoff and I worked on it. So this is something that needs some dire attention, and I look forward to discussing it next time in more detail, but certainly happy to answer any questions people have tonight.
I wanna thank you, Ryan, for pulling this together. Um, in prior years, we've, you know, not given ourselves enough time at this board table to really dig into this. So thank you, Ryan. Um, I I would ask that this might be an opportunity to promote the single fare idea with AAA TA um and that we might modify the contract that way. Um, we, you know, need to consider, are we going to ask for modifications that include different services, a reduction in services, prioritizing services? What is it gonna look like? You know, certainly, we all support public transit. Our voters support public transit. Hey, John? Um.
Just in time to adjourn.
But we may need to, um, I'm just wondering if between this meeting and our next meeting of the twenty sixth, Ryan?
Mm hmm.
How we might spec out what some of these or different service scenarios are gonna be, cause that's not something they're going to easily be able to do on the spot on the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
I mean, if we might give them to say, hey, here's some scenarios. What if you had X dollars less? What would be your service plan? I mean, if.
I like, I like that idea, you know, if we're saying five percent less or ten percent less, or.
Let's pick a number we can afford.
Let's pick a number we can afford.
Look at our four, you know.
Haven't they already cut service, though? Cause they don't, do they, do they not go between Liberty and and Syle Church anymore? They used to go through your neighbor, didn't they?
They still do.
Oh, they still do?
Oh, yeah, they still do.
Route twenty nine and twenty eight?
Yes, yes.
Cause I didn't see it on the, on the.
Uh, it is, it's later in their night, page nine or ten. Um, one option is certainly uh, you know, taking a percentage uh stab at it, I guess. Um, another option is wave unilaterally, apparently, at least from my understanding, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding, but uh, increase the amount of frequency on the Jackson Road Connector by over a hundred percent, which is wonderful, but.
They haven't been billing us more than we contracted for.
Correct, but that is contemplated in the, in the next year's contract, and it wasn't something we specifically had any discussion about.
We didn't ask for it, we're not contracted for.
Correct, and Community Connector, uh while I understand Syle's revenue share into that, it's predominantly a route that serves Chelsea and Dexter. It has uh two stops in Syle, one of which being at McDonald's. Um, the data I received in one of those memos showed very minimal ridership there. And inevitably, I think the route's gonna end at Meyer anyways because that's where uh AAATA services. So I I don't necessarily fully agree with a fifty or sixty thousand dollar agreement for something that has minimal service and much less frequency. Uh, but I would say, you know, I can see it a five to ten percent increase year over year. I understand that, especially with transit funding being cut from the state and federal government, um, maybe a little more, but I I fiscally, we can't afford it.
Just a point of order.
Mm hmm.
There's only Route thirty.
Oh.
They haven't, they don't have the, I think it's twenty nine and twenty, twenty six and twenty seven, twenty nine, you know, depending on whether it's coming from Liberty or coming from Syle Church.
Hmm.
Um, so that, to me, they've reduced the service by forty percent perhaps by not running that bus.
Hmm.
And and they're gonna increase the fee and cut the service?
I I feel like we need a designee or designees, and and Christie, I don't know if there's any staff who might be available to help, um but to um get um, like if Chris or somebody might be um available. Um, but we we need to get some of these. We, I think we need some service scenarios, like you're saying, Ryan, like, you know, let's say there's a five percent increase. I mean, at least keep, keep the problem out there. We still have to deal with the deficit, and we would be, we're projected already to be in a deficit for meaning expenditures beyond revenue pulling from our fund balance. But we're projected by FYE twenty eight to start having our fund balance go below our minimum that we set for ourselves, which is where I start to really get concerned. I mean, if we i- i- this is really a a kind of strategy conversation for the board, but I I it's probably gonna be a combination of identifying additional revenue, but also making services more, as efficient as possible. I mean, these are really difficult times, and I assume those agencies are gonna be dealing with more cuts.
Mm hmm. So I I don't necessarily have the answer to all. So I, I don't necessarily have the answer to all these questions, so it's a great way to start the party.
Yeah.
And we did have a a transit committee, we could, I do think we need to, at a future meeting, consider a revised charge and get a transit committee, I don't know if it should be part of planning, I don't know if we'll understand more about what direction it should go after the nineteenth.
Well, Kim Moore was on that, wasn't she?
Yep.
And Chris Ching?
Uh, Joyce, Chris, Kim and Will.
I feel like there were more people on the.
And Jan Kalbertson.
Oh, I didn't know she was, for some reason. Okay.
It's a big hairy problem. Thanks, Ryan.
Yep, uh, at this point, it was just a discussion item. Um, there wasn't necessarily any action that has to be taken tonight, so I'd suggest we move on to the next item unless there's other questions.
And uh, the next item?
Is O four, terminate agreement with Syle Township Lobbyist GCSI. So, uh, I prepared this item as well, uh, I know we spoke about during the budget season uh, that we adopted a budget that included funding for six months of lobbyist services with GCSI. Uh, during that budget process, the board trustees know that the relationship between the township and GCSI should be further discussed. Um, Township's general fund has experienced significant financial impacts. Uh, on July twenty second, we adopted first quarter budget amendments that resulted in negative impact to the general fund totaling one hundred seventy three thousand nine hundred and four dollars and seventeen cents. At the same meeting, we also discussed the results of the wage and salary study, which carries additional fiscal implications. Uh, we adopted that study, which further increased the general fund deficit, well, not all of it went to the general fund, I'll, I'll disclaim that, that's one thing I have to add it. Some of those went to water and sewer and other departments. But additional uh fund impacts across organization of eighteen thousand three hundred sixty six dollars and seventy seven cents. Um, the recommendation from myself is that we end our contract with GCSI, do the ongoing uh deficit and lack of utilization of services. And Clerk Flintoff's recommendation was, end the contract with GCSI, because Syle Township does not fully utilize the services of GCSI.
Well, in, didn't we have a subcommittee? Or um people assigned to GCSI um from the board?
Yes.
We have informally people assigned, yes.
Yeah, and can I just
Sure.
clarify one point of information, Ryan?
Sure.
Um, and it is contained in the recommendation, and we may have been discussing it this way. I wanna clarify, we, we let this GCSI contract lapse. What was it, six months ago? And so just, uh, it's sort of a technicality, but I just wanna be clear, the contract is lapsed, and I believe that they have been working outside of the contract.
Month to month.
Yeah, a month to month, so they invoice us and we pay and we invoice and pay, but needless to say, the relationship, yeah.
Well, that's a typical practice when a contract lapses, you know, you can continue on a month to month basis.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll start. I don't agree with this proposal. Um, I think that GCSI has been beneficial for the township. I think that we are, the whole state is in kind of a dire situation right now because the State House and then the Senate are locked in conflict, no bills have been passed. Oh, yeah, no sessions are occurring, and they haven't, uh, they don't know when they're gonna come together on a budget, and they eventually have to come together on a state budget. But schools are being impacted. Um, organizations around, in the state are being impacted by this right now, local units of government. So I have been in touch with John Horford on a regular basis, every two weeks or so. And he's been updating me on the fact that nothing is happening. And he asks me regularly, is there anything else you want me to do? And maybe I've been a bit remiss by not bringing this to the board, but it is on us. We have to decide how we wanna utilize their services. I, they were very, very helpful last year in getting funding for the fire department and some additional fund. So I hate to cut off this option right now. But if there isn't the will in this group, then there isn't the will, but I think that they do provide a good service, and we've tapped into it in the past.
Brad? It's like you are. Something. Oh, I guess he's gonna go first. Yes, you may.
The annual bill, excuse me, the annual bill for GCSI is what, around forty thousand?
Thirty nine.
Thirty nine thousand? Okay, and they, at one point in time, I think, got some hundreds of thousands of money for the fire department.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, however, without a budget, they're kinda stymied, they can't get any money.
They can't.
Yeah, but um I waffle back and forth on the use of of an lobbyist, but it is a good source of information, and they can get us money. Assuming money's available, now that's, that's the question, is will money be available? Well, we don't know that, but um, and we won't know that if we don't have a lobbyist, if we don't have a presence in Lansing. So that's, that's the thing that concerns me is that I, is, are we cutting our nose off despite our face? If we, if we, if we, if we cut ties with with our lobbyist, so.
I appreciate the comments, um, you know, if somebody is willing to I, I, I just need to see more out of them, it, it's not that, they, they have done great work, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that. Um, I just am in this midst of an economic uh, quagmire, and this seems like one area where we can help offset some of our additional expenses.
It might not be a wise thing to do it that way, though.
I just wanna, wanna say, this is, I think the since being on the board, I think this is maybe the fifth time we've had this conversation, where we say, we need to, to make it worth our money. Um, we need to use them more, I mean, it is one of the very few bills where month after month after month, we pay them, and most months we have asked nothing of them, except to be kind of available. So I guess kind of a question I'm just asking out loud is, you know, certainly, we there was a time where we didn't, we used them, we didn't use them, we started using them again. Is there any reason to believe that if we stopped, we couldn't reengage with them or another lobbyist if needed? Um, David, I apologize for saying no. Um, if there's money available, and and Kathy and David, I hear your point uh, concern that we would need a lobbyist available in Lansing to know if there's money available. I was basing my chiming in no, well, just, you know, based on the SEMCOG legislative update that we've all gotten. Um, the report about the impact of the Medicaid changes from the re- federal reconciliation bill, and how much of the general operating money that's going to take. Um, which far exceeds any of the money, the amount of that general operating money that's ever typically available for earmarks. Um, so I, I didn't mean to chime in and say no, cuz none of us can see the future, but you know, the projections for this year are that, you know, there's gonna be a lot of cuts at the state level, and I would personally be disappointed in my state representatives if they prioritized earmarks for communities with lobbyists over backfilling Medicaid cuts. That's me as a voter. We don't, we don't.
Or school lunches.
And we can't, you know, we, we don't know what they're gonna do, but
No idea.
But, but I would say for the township budget, there are a lot of areas, you know, we're gonna need to to, to look at as we kind of proceed through these economic times, and I, I will say, this is a contractor we pay, um, and, and don't, we, we underutilize the services.
It's an odd time right now to make this decision. Because of the impacts in, in the State House and Senate, I mean, each chamber has sued the other chamber.
Yeah, it's extraordinary, I mean. So Kathy, um, sorry, the, the last time you had a conversation with John?
Within the last week and a half.
And what was the update at that point?
Nothing had changed. He gave me some historic information about how we're going back now to you know, eighty years be it's been eighty years since we've seen a session pass only a few bills. I mean, it's like, okay, I mean, he said it's extraordinary, we, we, we haven't seen anything like this before.
So we just paid a bill, right at the end of, right? And so it's the next month from now?
It's a month.
Yeah, it's the end of each month. Oh, so we're still in August?
It's from the ninth to the tenth every
Oh.
Yeah, the ninth of the one month to the tenth of the next.
Yeah, and even, let's say, everything was fine at the state level. Syle Township, we as a board need to, if we choose to continue with GCSI, is to have a plan on how to utilize and um consistently, and to, and to, and also, you know, if at the one point in June, I think it was, the big talk was um at the House, cuz isn't that Matt Hall is the Speaker of the House? All about roads, and then, you know, Governor Whitmer, Whitmer is all about roads, not all, but, you know, she was more but then they had the Senate that wasn't, and there's all of that. But if there, if we know that um the House and the Senate, or House or Senate, or Governor, or all three hopefully together, that there's something that we can leverage, and if it's roads, or if it's something else, fire or whatever, that that's what we should be focused on, you know, whatever money they are willing to provide. But but, uh, yeah, and I agree that we shouldn't be, you know, spending money on something that we're not getting something out of. But I also hate to cut ties, and I mean, we could, if we, later on, would it, could we still do a month to month with him? With um GCSI? You have your hands up?
I don't see why not, sorry.
Did you get your answer?
Yeah.
Question?
Well, my comment, yeah, sure.
I, I had, I'm scratching my head about this model that we have to ask for something, otherwise we're on retainer and we pay this amount. Um, I, I would have an expectation that GCSI was driving the service and making suggestions and being the proactive, they're getting thirty three hundred dollars a month for what? Um, they send out a legislative update, which is a something they send to everybody, but they're not customizing the service for, they're not attempting to customize the service for us, they're not attempting to earn the thirty three hundred. Um, when John Horford was here, the last time, we asked him to um compile a list of requests that, that entities were asking for and tried to get some handle on, on um I forget why we asked him that.
What we're missing?
It's getting late, but um I, I, I wouldn't myself have a service that says, I'll call you when I need you, and I'm gonna pay you anyway. So I don't think, if, and I don't expect Ca- you Kathy to push this through um, to make it happen. So at this point, there's no visibility to funding available. Like, nobody thinks there's funds available, right? Whether it's fighting, or it's um cuts from the federal government to the state government, or whatever, so it, it doesn't look fruitful that we will get anything, and we don't know a timeframe.
They may not even pass their budget in, in actual reverse, I mean, that could just be.
They were supposed to have the school funding budget by July first. They've always had it, but by July first, and.
I, I will say SEMCOG, if y'all caught that, they had a great summary. I think the best summary of anybody I've seen on the status of things.
Well, Kathy, I have a suggestion, could you talk with John and share with him our predicament, and I'm sure he, he's facing that, that same predicament with other, but if we could just suspend this and then maybe October first, touch base and see where, what information, if he's willing to share that, without I don't know.
I'll talk to him and see if they can give us any other options.
And we did budget this only through September. Right, Ryan?
That was my understanding.
Yeah, we, we budget, at budget time, six months, that's April through September. So, I mean, that does give us kind of a, a deadline, you know?
Well, we've adjusted those decisions many times in the past.
No, and we could, we, we could adjust those decisions, we also um never did budget amendments before, but let's not go backwards, okay?
John, were you gonna say?
I've been pretty quiet at this meeting.
I thought that's because you weren't here.
People make good points, are we getting our bang for our buck? And it sure seems awkward to pay almost forty K a year for a service, that if you don't initiate the um, connectivity or the relationship, then, then you just pay the money almost for nothing, so I really appreciate uh those comments at the table. However, um, ha- have, we even discussed this with GCSI such that, you know, we have concerns about paying this money and not getting our bang for the buck? I mean, I, I, I just, does John know this is coming?
Yes.
And, and does he say?
He understands, he understands, I mean, he's had a lot this year too.
Oh, there's that, so, so he didn't offer us a better deal? Is that like, oh, well, for a long time client, we'll give you, you know, six months of discount or something?
He didn't say that?
Well, he's only one co- one person out of the company, assuming they have other employees.
I know that there, there's a large municipality uh to the east, and they stopped using GCSI, and they use a I think, I can, uh, Miller can't fail the.
I think you said Dykema.
They use a, a big law firm, too late, and I can think about it, so I know there are other, there are other lobbyists that can be used, but do we want to? Are we the size and type of a township that should have a lobbyist, so when we have a question, when something comes up, they can help us? Um, and that's like, is that worth thirty three hundred dollars a month? And that's like, is that worth thirty-three hundred dollars a month? If this, I'm willing to support you in your request to keep it going for a while, if that's what you wanna do, and, and report back to us as to what we got for thirty-three hundred dollar this month, or, or, you know, so I'm willing to continue it, at least, you know, at least until the September eight, whatever we have. So I'm willing to go with the flow for, no, I know, but I'm willing to go with the flow if you're asking us to do that.
So she's not, um, Brian's asking to.
Well, I don't have, there hasn't been a motion yet.
Right.
But, um, but when one comes, I'm gonna, uh, very likely be voting alongside, uh, trustee Noel.
And no matter what trustee Noel does. I, I mean. Do you want the record, John?
She has a relationship.
No, no, I mean.
No, and I agree with you. I'm just teasing you.
But you, you all are welcome to offer your own motion.
Noting that it's budgeted through September. I mean, you could also make a motion to amend our general fund budget. I, I would just say on the contract terms, because I, I do think, I mean, this is one thing that is always hard. We, we don't have anybody else we pay for retainer. We don't have a single other, we pay for services or goods received. And I just have such a difficult time. We have a general fund deficit. This is the only service that we pay for, what, that you'll pick up the phone?
We have them on retain.
Right, but is that responsible?
How about this? What if we invite John to a board meeting to, to present to the entire board?
Present what?
Present what?
What they can do, what our options might be.
Contract terms? I mean, do you think he could?
We could explore that, I suppose. I mean, I could let him know that.
Or a legislative or budget update, or from Washington update, or from the Capitol.
Which, which I thought we, we discussed twice, we've had him to the board, and I'm not disagreeing. I, I'll support that idea Kathy. But I will say we've done this twice before. This is, it's, you know, where we've had him before the board. He will get before the board more. You know, we had Kirk Prophet, we've had different people say, yes, part of the service we provide are regular legislative updates to the board. And then they don't happen.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, I, I question their business model. That they, um, you have to ask for something. They don't provide any advice, direction, anything.
Other than the, other than the newsletter they send out.
Right.
Well, and the board needs to give them direction as well. We're, wow, we're, we're different from others too. It's, it's a collaborative, supposed to be.
Some of it is philosophical. Like, we shouldn't have to beg you to do stuff for us, but that's kind of what, like municipal lobbying is about. I know if he talented, did it that way. Uh, Ann Arbor does it that way. Wasnak County does it that way. And it's kind of the nature of the beast. Where it, you, you just kind of plug your nose to pay it. It isn't the right way to say it, but that's kind of how a lobbyist work. And in relationship with like, what you put into it.
Sure.
And is the retainer model? From your.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a great model.
No, I'm not saying it's great, but have you seen it? Have you seen it? And just didn't happen to have seen it in your experience, or Mariah, in your experience, the retainer model contract for municipalities? Either whether it's legal services or lobbying services and, and, you know, and I'm not putting you on the spot, John, but I'm sincerely curious if other places have that kind of retainer model, you know, to pay for services that you may or may not receive.
That's kind of, that's kind of.
That's typical?
I mean, I would, yeah, that's, that's how it is. So.
Thank you.
The lobbyist, for all intents and purposes, I'm gonna say this kind of crudely, but sits and waits for his client, his or her clients to ask them to do something for them, rather than looking out for pots of money that he thinks his clients might want to tap into?
I think he might be doing some of that. He has done that in the past.
Okay.
Well, and there have been pots available.
And let's be clear, the point of having a lobbyist in this, in our particular situation is purely to look out for where we can get extra money from the state.
And federal services.
And, and it could be legislative changes.
It's like what's going on legislatively with solar panels and like voting rights or things like that. It's like having, having an inside track when the legislature does something for once in Michigan.
We'll get back to that soon. Hopefully.
Okay, so it's more than money. It's, it's, okay.
Relationships with legislatures and guiding legislation and being like, you know, this something comes out that we don't like how it impacts legislation, or they're gonna let people put in, uh, data farms or whatever they want, or, or things like that, representing municipalities interests in the legislature, when, when there's substantive legislation coming along.
Yeah, and, and I certainly appreciate the efforts that have been done for us in the past, including as recently as last year. This is, to me, this is a fiscal issue for this year, for this moment. I'm, I'm certainly willing to revisit, especially if somebody, you know, um, brings forth a case where there is money available, the government decides to actually get back to work and work with itself.
I'd, I'd be supportive of tabling this item until September twenty-third.
Uh, is it twenty-third or thirtieth?
Oh, thank you. Until September thirtieth. Our two September meetings are September ninth and September thirtieth. I don't know Kathy, if that, that might give some time to have a conversation with John?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Ratchashana.
Yeah.
Is on the twenty-third.
I support that one.
But does that entail another month of payment?
Yes.
Yes.
So that would go till Christie, the.
It's from the, like, the tenth to the first, it's in this package, actually.
The tenth to the ninth?
Yeah.
So what if we, um, move it to September ninth then? I would make a motion, I'd like to revise my motion with David's permission, a motion to table oh-four until September ninth.
Okay.
So that we have time to bring more information.
Kathy?
Yes.
Get your money's worth.
Can I make a suggestion that they get on regular month bill at the beginning of the month? Not the tenth? I don't know why they're doing that. It just makes it confusing for us.
And, and I will just say that these invoices stick out so much to me and Christie and Ryan and Rebecca, and have for years, because they're the only invoices we pay without any confirmation of services delivered. Our, our process is very good. We work very hard to make sure we've got what we paid for before we pay bills. And we, it's impossible to do that here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there was, um, a motion by Flintoff.
Support by Reed.
Could you read the motion, please?
Sure. A motion by Flintoff, support by Reed, to table oh-four until September ninth. And to reconsider it with any more information brought to the table.
Do you want me to invite John to our next board meeting? Yeah. Okay, I will.
I.
Let's get our money's worth.
If you think it's informs this conversation, like with contract terms, like.
No, until we have the discussion with them.
Sure. I, I, just as a point of information, I would say if John's coming, we also have WAVE and AAATAs I mentioned shortly ago. Uh, there also is a potential of having crossroads at that meeting, so.
Really?
That's, we could talk about that.
Okay, we're still waiting for the air quality.
Correct. He said he should have it by the fifteenth.
Yes, so just be prepared.
We have Piper Ridge, the conditional.
Yeah, Piper Ridge is set till the next meeting date certain. I'd also, well, I'm gonna wear a little track, but, but we will need a determination about if we're gonna handle the PFAS issue at September ninth.
I had, I think I told you, Christie, the last meeting in September, didn't I?
I'll have to look at my notes.
He thinks that's what I said.
Okay.
For the record, I won't be.
I thought you were gonna take your email and read your notes and get back to me, but I don't. I'll have to look. I know, at this point, I, I have to, I have to look at my notes.
Okay.
So I remember writing something down. I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay. So Kathy may, may or may not invite John, and that's fine.
Getting ready to.
Okay, I will.
Do we need to vote on this motion or not?
Yes, we do. So.
Go, go on, question.
People just keep talking. Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? None? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, now we're on to K one payment of the bills.
Thank you. I pulled this from consent because the need arose to add one more, um, proposed claim for payment. Um, so I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed claims for payment of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, as presented with the addition of one payment to UTECH, U T E C H, for fifteen thousand dollars from account one oh one, two two eight, seven three zero for digital records software, comma, and to receive the prior check run report for July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Or?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, now we are into public comments. We will begin public comments to the Board of Trustees for up to five minutes on any matter. Well, they already know the rules, so.
Yes, we do.
Well, at some Scioto Township resident, at the end of the meeting here, I walked underneath the speakers in the middle of the room, in the back of the room. And I can't hear audio coming out of those. I can hear you guys. It's obviously being amplified. I think it might be the front speakers. Just a heads up that that might be a technical thing you have to look at tomorrow.
Thank you.
The seven hundred and fifty thousand for the ladder truck, uh, was GCSI involved in that?
Yes.
That was last year. Maybe twenty twenty-three?
It was last year.
Yeah. So assuming that we paid forty thousand dollars to GCSI last year, that resulted in a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant towards the fire truck. That seems like a reasonable return on investment. Thank you for finally moving on the garbage fiasco. Uh, the preferred hauler, uh, model seems to be a workable compromise between people that want fewer trucks and the people that want an option. And if we can negotiate a better price, um, with, uh, WM, seems to me that would be very welcome by residents. Some of this is water under the bridge, but here we go. Uh, what was the rationale and authority applied to the request that resulted in a non-negotiable, non-negotiable demand in the proposal? Uh, I don't ask for answers to this tonight, but I would like some answers to these questions. Why was it called a request? That language makes it appear the terms could be negotiated. Why didn't the language of the proposal reflect the actual intention of the board? It was only tonight, thirty-five days later, that it was revealed that it was an all or nothing demand. The words used tonight, request, sharing, discussion, indicate something other than the hard line ultimatum. Uh, Jess, at one point you said the fuzzy language was seized upon by the DDA, um, in terms of, uh, financing the three million dollars.
By the DDA? I don't believe.
You said the fuzzy language was seized upon.
I did say that, yes.
We were talking about the DDA. The, the DDA did in fact return the fire village. So when you talk about the fuzzy language of the village and the DDA captured that, but in the end, they did indeed return that village to the, to the board. So the fact, it doesn't seem accurate for you to say it was seized upon, because in fact, it was returned to the township. A cursory look at, uh, we asked earlier about why didn't any of the, uh, why didn't the return of captures appear on the audits, the lack of return of the capture? Because a cursory look at the DDA finances would show they had several million dollars in their savings. Seems to me that's a very high level, uh, initial cursory look that would resolve that. I hear you. Um, sure, there were issues with the DDA. I would, would have advised to fix it. Don't just abolish it. John, for your information, the DDA was dissolved.
I heard, I had it on the Keith radio.
Okay. And tonight, during the discussions, there was a lot of confusion on, on this board about which terms were what and, and what the, the, um, the, uh, terms of the, the contract or the conditions of the proposal were. There was certainly a lot of confusion amongst the DDA members sitting back here. Uh, I could hear their exclaims of, oh, we didn't know that. That makes it look like the proposal that began on July eighth looks like a Trojan horse. It looks like you sent a document to the DDA that was a request, and ultimatum disguised as a request. And I think that makes that dirty trick number fifteen. I'm so disappointed that we have the DDA tonight gave probably fifty examples between all of them speaking of what could be done with the DDA. And it's a, it's a new group. There's a lot of new energy on this group. There's cooperation and collaboration and partnership willingness on this group. And we just walked away from all of that creativity. So let me ask the question, right, you dissolved it. Now what? What's the plan to deal with all of the stuff that the DDA was doing for the township? Um, all of the businesses that would go through the DDA? And all of the things that they talked about that I can't talk about because I'm not a member? Uh, who is gonna deal with that? What's the plan going forward now? You've dissolved it. Is there any plan in place for how it's going to be run now? That, I would like an answer now to that question. What do you think? Is there a, is there a plan going forward? I'm not gonna answer.
I think we're gonna have to discuss it.
And this isn't the time for board response, but I hear you. Well, no, 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 I'm, I mean, I think it's, it's after public comment.
I just, I, uh, I heard halfway when you said this is not the time interaction. Now, um, okay, you voted tonight to dissolve the DDA. Um, clearly, uh, DDA attorney Sweeney is no longer involved. Who will decide what to do with the money in the DDA account? How is that going to be processed? Is that gonna be done through Mariah?
No, I gotta say, Rob, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is part of what I was talking about with so many of the misstatements. That is set forth in statute and ordinance, the ordinance which has been in this board packet twice that we've discussed. We've discussed internally. So I just want to be clear, there is no question, there is no discretion. The statute sets forth what that is.
Thank you for making that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, because I think that's part of why, you know, when these misunderstandings get amplified, it creates more upsetness than is, is necessary. There's, it doesn't go back to the state. It's, it's all set forth and we will follow the law to the T.
And thank you for clarifying that. And that wasn't part of your discussion tonight. If that wasn't established, that, okay, here's what we're gonna do.
So, so part of two is I write things in items and in ordinances. And part of what I think has been something we need to talk about is why people don't read the, the packets. I'm not talking about you. I'm just saying, I'm just saying people need to read and understand the material that is. I'm just saying, I'm just saying people need to read and understand the material that is before them for action for months.
And then lastly, uh, you said earlier there was someone who, uh, said it went back to the state. That was me. I didn't know which, um, capture, um, uh, entities it would go back to. So I use, I just use the generic term, I mean, goes back to the state to show that it doesn't stay local. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present would like to speak? Only one.
Wow.
Caroline?
Welcome. Hi Caroline. First of all, the, um, totally, I propose nothing. The two water fountains out there, the tall one, if you hit it, it sprays like all the way up against the wall.
Been that way for years.
Okay, just let me know. That's just like.
Which does?
The big one, the taller one. You hit the button and it's like, hits the wall.
That one's a urinal.
Yeah. I want to make just two points. Uh, one of them, to echo what Rob said, it was just a, it, I'm very disappointed and it's such a shame. That the board voted to walk away from an open-handed offer from the DDA to work together. I just don't understand. It's just something broken and there's an offer, let's work together to fix it. The answer is no. When you talk about good governance, to me, that's not good governance. The other thing I wanna talk about. And frankly, I don't blame Linda for flipping the chairs because this board to committees. DDA, compensation and RAC. You guys are very condescending. Not all of you, but many of you have a very condescending way of talking to the committees. And a very superior way of projecting yourself. And I just can understand why she did that. The RAC committee felt like that after we had to deal with you guys a couple of months ago about our, um, recommendations. And I watched the compensation committee, um, uh, videos. I know that you probably are all gonna go home and say, she doesn't know what she's talking about, another complainer or resident and all that kind of stuff. But I'm just saying. I really would invite you all to take a long, hard look at how you talk to the committee representatives. I just think that there's a lot of condescension and patronization and tone of voice like, oh. We really value you guys. We really are so, thank you so much for what you do and then F you, out you go. Is what it feels like. You get a kick in the ass. Thank you very much, but don't let the door hit you on the butt on the way out. It feels that way. A lot of us feel that way. It's not just me. So I'm just inviting you all to just. Consider that and not just dismiss me out of hand as another grumpy at midnight resident.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caroline.
Christie, anyone online?
Is there anyone online that would like to comment? Did you resume him? Uh, there are no hands raised.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn at a twelve, oh, oh, wait, um. Back up a little bit. Board response?
If I could briefly.
Sure.
I just wanna say again that, um. Fix it, not abolish it. Um, the basis is it has met its purpose. And I would say too. That the fiscal audit, and I addressed this, but this keeps getting repeated. The scope of a regular financial audit would not catch such things. It just doesn't. It looks at the books. It assumes that we're following the laws about where things are in a test. So, so that's just part of how it works. So, thank you.
Is there a motion?
One comment.
More comment?
One comment.
I have one too.
Rob, the money does stay local. It's in the county.
Yeah, it's all local.
But it's.
It's solid, well.
Well, and Syo residents are being subsidized right now by Lima Township, by Pittsville Township, by not having these tax dollars go.
You've heard a lot of this already and it's after midnight. Could we please move on?
Hey, wish me a happy birthday.
Trustee Reed, please.
Nope.
Go ahead.
That's okay.
Move to adjourn?
Yes, at.
Well, oh, four, happy birthday.
Who's supported?
There's motion by Ryder.
I'll support.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.